Good evening. This is a special meeting of the Princeton Planning Board on September 29, 2021. Pursuant to Section 13 of the Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of the time and place of this special meeting has been given by filing a copy with the Clerk of Princeton on the 22nd day of August, 2021. Notice that this meeting has been posted to the municipal website, Pursuant to Executive Order 107, due to the state of emergency in New Jersey regarding COVID-19, notice that during the declared state of emergency, all regular and special meetings of the Princeton Planning Board will be held electronically via Zoom, was transmitted to the Princeton Packet and The Times, and was filed with the Clerk of Princeton on April 8, 2020, and again on January 6, 2021. Members of the public will have an opportunity at a specific point in the proceedings to comment and ask questions. Please be aware, this meeting is being recorded. Those wishing to comment orally should virtually raise your hand using the button near the center of the bottom of your screen, or if you're participating by phone, by pressing *9. Oral comments will be taken in the order in which hands were raised. We ask with respect that members of the public, please do your very best to limit your comments to three minutes. Inappropriate comment containing obscenity, hate speech, or relating to matters not before the Board will be muted. Carrie, will you call the roll, please?
Ms. Capizoli?
I'm here.
Mr. Cohen?
Here.
Mr. McGowan?
Here.
Mr. Oakman?
Here.
Mr. O'Donnell? Mr. Quinn?
Here, as is my dog. Right here in the background.
Ms. Sacks?
Here, as are my dogs, plural.
Mr. Texarney?
Here, and I don't have any dogs.
Mr. Chow? Mr. Chow, you're muted.
Here.
Thank you. Mr. Taylor?
You're muted, too, Jack.
I'm here without a dog.
And Mrs. Wilson?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. I do not have any announcements tonight. Do any other members of the Board or staff have announcements to share? Okay. Onto minutes. We have two sets of minutes. The first from November 14, 2019, and another from October 22, 2020. And I just want to say, the staff is doing their best to catch up with minutes. Everybody knows it's a little irregular, but they are, they're doing their best. It's tough. There's a whole lot on their plate, but, and these are, these are old, but they bring back such memories when you read them. So, November 14, 2019. Would someone like to move those or offer up any kind of comments or edits?
There are only four members who can vote. That would be Mr. Cohen, Mr. McGowan, Mr. Oakman, and yourself, Mrs. Wilson.
Thanks.
I'll move the minutes, acceptance.
Mr. Cohen moves the minutes. Anyone?
Second.
Mr. Oakman, seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? Okay. And now the October 22, 2020, regular meeting minutes. Any comments or edits? Would someone like to move them? How many folks are eligible to vote for those, Carrie?
Actually, everybody present.
Good.
Except for Mr. Taylor.
That Mr. Taylor.
Move approval.
Mr. Quinn?
Thank you.
Moves that we approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Oh, go ahead.
For McGowan, seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstaining? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Maybe perhaps I should have made announcement. We were not able to get landmarks resolution out, so that is going to be postponed. Staff has been extremely busy with other reports and next agenda.
Okay. So you're saying we'll have it at the next meeting? Is that what?
I hope so. Mr. Purcell can probably get to it by then. So he's been, he's been extremely busy.
Yes.
Jim, are you okay with that?
I am working, I am working on it as we speak right now. I have it open on my desktop and I am reviewing it.
Thank you.
Mr. Purcell is without a doubt the hardest working engineer in New Jersey, if not the nation, so.
And a multitasker to boot. Okay, we have an application. Princeton Edens LLC, preliminary and final major site plan and minor subdivision. This is at 301 North Harrison Street. We all know it as the Princeton Shopping Center. Block 7401, Lot 1.011, And we have until the 16th of October to to act on this application.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I just have a question. In the staff report, it indicated that some of the variances that are required for the signage were not noted in the application. And I just want to make sure that the notice was adequate. If, I don't know if the notice made reference the signage variances that were needed or had a catch-all saying any relief that was needed, but I just want to make sure that it was properly noticed.
It had the catch-all, Mr. Cohen. I don't know if it mentioned the signing. Unfortunately, I don't have it in front of me. But it does have a catch-all to cover, you know, any, any variances, waivers, permits, approvals that, that may come up as a result of staff review during the hearing. So I think, I think the notice is still valid.
I forwarded it to Mr. Bridger and to Mr. Purcell, and I reviewed it. I did see a reference to it. I believe everything is in order. I can forward it to you tonight, Mr. Regan, if you need.
If you need a third on that, it was in order.
Great.
Okay. We'll accept the three-way confirmation that was in order. And just for folks who may not be aware or recall, Mr. Regan, Frank Regan is our Special Counsel for Redevelopment. So if you're accustomed to seeing Jerry Muller tonight, you're going to see Frank Regan and, and hear from him as well. So, welcome back, Frank.
Thank you.
Michael, do you want to start things off?
Yeah, I'll give a brief. I was going to do a brief introduction. I mean, this is a property that probably needs no introduction. It's very familiar to all Princetonians and people in the region. The Princeton Shopping Center is the site of this application. The Shopping Center was built in 1954, and it's always been a commercial development, retail with some professional services and offices. Today, the building at the north end that was formerly built as a Bamberger's department store is, has a McCaffrey's in the ground floor level. It's been expanded slightly and upstairs or other office and professional uses. Throughout the, most of the shopping center is retail. And this application is very interesting in that what it's going to, what's proposing to do is introduce a residential component to the, to the mix of uses on the site. The...
We lost your sound, Michael.
We lost your audio, Michael. We can't hear you.
Apparently, he can't hear us either.
Yeah.
Okay.
Michael, he can't hear you.
I'll text him.
Good, thanks.
Sorry.
There you go.
Guess I didn't pay the bill here or something. What was the last thing you heard?
Uh...
Adding a residential, adding a residential use.
Adding a residential component, which is also part of our Fair Share Housing Plan, and you'll be hearing that as well. It's an inclusionary housing component of our Fair Share Housing Plan, a 200-unit residential development, which will be, become an integral part of this overall project. So it's an interesting stage in the development of this site where now we're adding residential as well as the existing commercial and professional and office uses. And there's also a proposal for a freestanding site for the Walgreens, for the Walgreens to be relocated out closer to North Harrison Street. So you'll be hearing about that, too. Staff has been working closely with the applicant to try to make this as pedestrian-friendly and all-user-friendly in terms of modes of transportation, accessibility, drainage and stormwater. You'll hear details about that. So I think without further ado, since everyone is rather familiar with the site, I'll hand it to the applicant or to the chair if she has anything else to say.
I don't have anything to add. Mr. Hoff, are you representing?
Yes, I am, Madam Chair. For the record, Rick Hoff of the Law Firm of Bizcare Hoff, I'm here on behalf of the applicants. There's co-applicants for this. It's Princeton SC Residential Urban Renewal LLC. It's an affiliated entity of Avalon Bay. You'll have Avalon Bay representatives that you're, the Board's familiar with as well as the professionals, but that is the entity because we're in a redevelopment area. We also have Princeton Edens LLC. That's the applicant associated with Walgreens that Mr. LaPlace made reference to, as well as the revisions that we'll talk about to the existing shopping center structure itself. Mr. LaPlace, I'm not going to attempt to redo his intro. He did it better than I would have, per my own notes here in front of me. So I do want to touch on a couple of procedural things. First, I know you made reference to the notice. I, I would concur with all staff and Mr. Regan that the notice was accurate, but I want it to be reflected on the record that the notice did make specific reference to sign variances that may be needed. For reasons we'll talk about a little later, we don't know necessarily that the residential building requires any variance because of the way the redevelopment plan is phrased, but we can, we can get to that further along when we address the signage. I also wanted to sort of lay out the groundwork for how we see this playing out this evening. You made reference before the meeting started, sort of off the record, Mr. Cohen, about the traffic report. We are not anticipating, we're not, not, we are not providing any traffic testimony tonight because one of the comments in that traffic report was some updated information. We're in the process, we've compiled that. We're just now preparing the updated report, letter report. We'll forward that along to staff professionals as well as your traffic consultant for review and be prepared to address that more thoroughly at the October 14 meeting. So I just wanted to make you aware that that's a topic we're cognizant of, but we just won't be dealing with it this evening. This evening, our plan is to deal with the, the residential building, the site plan layout as a whole, which will touch on all aspects of the development. But then we'll turn to the residential, to the architectural aspects of the residential component. And then with respect to the commercial, the architectural components, we'll likely, we'll also defer that until October 15. So we anticipate obviously going beyond tonight. So I wanted to lay out at the outset how we saw it unfolding. So the Board and members of the public, should they want to talk about traffic, they don't need to wait number of hours because that topic's not going to be covered this evening. So I wanted to at least advise some of that should they decide they would rather wait. And also, one more bit of housekeeping. There was reference to a minor subdivision, and I wanted to alert the Board that subsequent to the submission, an issue was raised as to whether, in fact, this application is actually a major subdivision. And that occurs because the Princeton Code, although it defines a minor subdivision as that which creates two lots, which this does, there is a unique provision in the notice section of the code as it relates to providing notice of minor subdivisions. And in that section, it provides that "No minor subdivision shall be approved that involves any lot tracker parcel that shall have been approved as a minor subdivision within one year of the prior approval." As the Board may recall, the Shopping Center issue, the larger, we'll call it the Mother Lot, was subject of a minor subdivision in March of 2021, carving off a portion on the other side of the Shopping Center. So if reading that provision of the notice, we wouldn't have a minor subdivision because we would potentially have two within the same calendar year. So what we'd like to do at the outset here is to request an exception from that provision of the Princeton notice section of their code, pursuant to 51 of the MLUL. Not a variance, simply an exception, so that we all know that we're dealing with a minor subdivision rather than a major subdivision. I'm sure staff would confer, and Mr. Cahill, our representative who we'll introduce shortly, would confer that from a informational standpoint, there's nothing additional that you would need. This, this is a minor. It creates two lots. So all the information you would need to substantively review the application is there. We just have this temporal requirement within the code that prohibits two of those minors in the same year. So we're requesting that the Board grant an exception to that provision to allow for two minor subdivisions within one calendar year, the basis for which are frankly what Mr. LaPlace has already placed on the record, which is this is a continuation of Princeton's Affordable Housing Compliance Package, part of their settlement agreement with Fair Share Housing Center, as well as the judgment of compliance from the Superior Court. And to delay that, or simply the notion of waiting out the one year, doesn't serve anyone's interest, certainly those of low and moderate income households and of Princeton's, which are doing their very best to ensure that all aspects of that plan are complied with. So we feel as if forcing a delay of one year for this project is unwarranted and would warrant this Board's grant an exception pursuant to Section 51. We would ask the Board to act on that sort of at the outset here so we know what animal we're dealing with and know that it's going to be a minor subdivision.
Mr. Cohen?
I move granting of the exception that's requested.
A second.
Before I call a vote on that, I guess I would just ask, Mr. Regan, is there, some of what was said sort of went over my head, and I'm just, I'm just sort of compelled to ask if there's anything I'm not thinking about that you or staff, that causes you concern about this? I mean, it does not cause me concern on the face of it. I just want to ask the question.
It does not. And as Mr. Hoff pointed out, there's a provision in the Municipal Land Use Law, Section 51A, that, that actually allows for the Board to, to grant an exception to this type of requirement. And it indicates that the standard for granting such an exception is that if the literal enforcement of one or more of the provisions of the ordinance is impracticable or will exact undue hardship because of peculiar conditions pertaining to the land in question. And I think, as Mr. Hoff put on the record and relying on what Mr. LaPlace said, I think there's, there's more than sufficient basis for the, for the grant that exception, primarily being the affordable housing, being an inclusionary affordable project subject to the, to Princeton settlement. So I, and under timeframe, certain timeframes also.
Great.
Yeah, and I would just also comment that that's the prior subdivision was for the benefit of a third party assembling a larger lot at the north end of the Shopping Center.
Right, right, right.
Earlier subdivision did not benefit either of the parties to this application. So it's really, you know, well within the intent, I think, of the ordinance to give them the waiver.
Thank you. That is what was missing from my brain. Thanks very much. Okay, moved by Mr. Cohen, seconded by Mr. Quinn. I will just, rather than have a roll call vote, I think we can do an all-in-favor vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any abstaining or nay? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And with that, I think we'll start with our first witness, which is Mr. Keith Cahill from Bowler Engineering. He'll present the civil engineering testimony.
Let me just actually, I'm sorry, ask a quick question. When you said that you are not going to talk about the traffic report tonight, does that, does that mean all matters related to circulation? So car lanes and curbs, but also bikes and pedestrians and the whole sort of, no, it does not mean that. Okay, good. All right, I just wanted to double-check that. Thank you.
Yep.
Cahill?
With that, if I could get Mr. Cahill sworn?
Mr. Cahill, do you swear that the testimony about to give is the truth?
I do.
If you could just, for the record, give us your name.
Certainly. Keith Cahill, C-A-H-I-L-L, with the Firm of Bowler Engineering located in Warren, New Jersey.
Thank you.
Mr. Cahill, for the Board, members of the public, could you please provide your professional and educational background, please?
Certainly. I'm a civil engineer with a degree from Rutgers University. I also have a master's degree from Stevens Institute Technology in Civil Engineering. I'm a professional engineer licensed in the state of New Jersey that's been practicing civil engineering for approximately 26 years. My current position at Bowler Engineering is the principal and was over, and my role in this project was to oversee the civil site design in terms of the site layout, the site circulation and parking, stormwater management, lighting and landscaping as well. I've been accepted in excess of 100 different municipalities throughout the state of New Jersey as an expert in civil engineering. Testified in front of this Board before, probably 10 to 12 years ago for a TD Bank, long time ago. I'm very familiar with the site and, and been working with this project and the design team probably close to a year on this project.
And you've indicated you are licensed in the state of New Jersey as a professional engineer, and that license remains current?
Yes, I, yes, it is.
Thank you. Madam Chair, I'd offer Mr. Cahill as qualified to present expert testimony in the field of civil engineer.
We accept your qualifications. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, Mr. Cahill, before you get started, I know you're going to be working from a PowerPoint presentation that we provided to the Board. Mr. Regan, for sake of the record, I thought the best way to do this would be to mark that presentation in its totality as Exhibit A1. And then during, during the testimony, my witnesses will indicate which page of the presentation they're on, so the record is clear as to what slide that they were referring to at that time, if that's okay.
That's fine.
Okay. With that, Mr. Cahill, if you could get us oriented sort of, I know the Board has indicated they're very familiar with the site, but let's start from the outside and work our way into the proposal.
Certainly. And I hope I will start with Page 2 of Exhibit A1. Rick, everybody can see my screen? See the exhibit?
We got it.
Great.
In a little bit, though?
Yeah, we'll do. Yep. And, and as mentioned, I know everybody is familiar with the site. Actually, let me keep out a little bit just for reference here. Just, just as an overall, as mentioned, the Princeton Shopping Center is our project site location. It's located along North Harrison Street, as you know. For reference today, north will be to the left side of the page of this exhibit. And as we started in description of this project, the yellow is the outline of the property as it is, exists today. And the red lines, as shown here, is the, the proposed subdivision that Mr. Hoff mentioned. So the, the focus of tonight's discussion and the project will really be geared towards the southern, southern portion of the site. Just for reference to the Board, again, to the north is, is the vacant lot, and further is Turland Road. To the east is Grover Park. To the south, we have residential properties along Clearview Avenue. And then to the west, we have North Harrison Street and residential commercial properties across the street. So I'll zoom in now to kind of focus in on some of the more detailed existing conditions. Sorry, as I scroll through here, maybe a little bit of a delay on the zoom here. All right. Hopefully, that gives everybody a better view here. As mentioned, the entire site's 26.7 acres today, and we're subdividing off the red area, which is 2.99 acres. The balance of that area will be left for the, the Shopping Center. What you notice immediately in this is that a portion of the existing buildings of the retail facility are within the subdivision and must be demoed as part of this project to create the space for the new residential building that Avalon is proposing. Just some general items here in terms of, I mentioned the south end of the site is where we're really where the focus of modification of improvements and enhancement to the site. And the balance of the site, more to the north, the existing retail buildings, the existing PNC Bank and the Nomad Pizza. There's no proposed changes in the buildings, footprints, circulation, parking. So everything outside of our limit of disturbance, which is seven acres along the south side, and you'll see that clearly when I go to my next exhibit, is to remain the same. Now, what I want to point out, and just for reference, so everyone's clear, currently, the site is accessed by four points from North Harrison Street. Starting from the north end of the, of North Harrison there, we have a full movement driveway that's signalized. And as we head to the south, we have a full entrance, a right-in, right-out driveway. And as we continue south, a full exit driveway allows a right and a left out. And then the, an entrance-only drive at the farthest southern portion of the site. In regards to the onsite circulation, it essentially has two-way circulation around the entire site. Mostly, you'll see, or a primary access point or drive aisle is a two-way drive that circulates the entire site and along the perimeter and all the way out at the far end of the Shopping Center on the, on the west, east side, excuse me, by the ballparks in Grover Park. There is a one-way drive aisle that's, is along the, again, eastern side of the center, which helps for the, the loading and existing operations for deliveries to the retail facilities that are for those two buildings along that east side. In regards to just a couple of items in terms of parking and pedestrian circulation, it does have nine-by-18 parking stalls throughout and 24-foot-wide drive aisles where necessary and a minimum of 22-foot drive aisles where the one-way drive aisles are. There's, within the parking lot are numerous landscaped islands with existing trees. Specifically, in some of the areas, there are some existing rain gardens that handle some of the stormwater that is exiting the site that ultimately leaves off to the back or to the east side in Harris Brook. And I'll get into that a little bit further. In, in regards to pedestrian circulation, there are numerous access points from North Harrison Street into the site, couple up along the, the existing traffic signal. There's one up by PNC Bank. There's also an access point on the driveway that's opposite of our retail building and one that is an asphalt walkway that is along our southern property line that circulates along the buffer area to the residence of Clearview all the way back to the ballparks. And that's an existing five-foot asphalt walkway. It does meander through there. Essentially, it varies in width in a couple locations, closer to the ballpark, a little bit wider, and up by the right-of-way, a little bit wider that it spans out. But in general, it's about five feet in width. It also is located, that walkway, approximately 18 feet from our southernmost property line, with the exception of where the roadway bends and the sidewalk bends away from, and then actually up by the right-of-way, And then actually up by the right of way, it's even closer to the residence and to the the ambulance building there. In general, the only access point pedestrian circulation from the retail center is in the core, the center court area is at approximately the center location out to the park. It's highlighted in where my cursor is now, let's call it the midpoint of the retail facility. And it's the center area of the courtyard, noting there's no pedestrian connection on the southern side of the site that gets back to the park. And that's one of the things we're hoping to address with the with the redevelopment. And and I think is a key part of this project as well as, and as mentioned by the chair, lady chair is improving pedestrian and and vehicle and and bike circulation throughout this project. So a couple of the key points that it challenges within the site, and that's the existing grading. Just to give you an idea, North Harrison Street sits approximately five feet above the finished floors of the retail buildings. You slope down into the site anywhere between 5 and 2% on some of these driveways to get into the site. So the buildings are actually lower. Also true is along our southern property line in the rear, the rear property, our fence line or the real lot line or southern lot line is approximately five feet above the finished floor, five to six feet above the finished floor of the retail building on the southernmost corner of the property here. In general, the onsite stormwater is collected through inlets and discharged throughout to the rear of the site towards Harry's Brook in the rear, which is, I'll say, the heavy tree areas between the the ballparks here, the the ballfields. As you continue to the to the east, this parking lot starts to shed away from the buildings. And then, as you may be familiar with, the park actually sits five to six feet below our parking lot. And there's a, you know, a significant grade change right along that that lane. And then obviously the ballparks are flat. It's important because as we look to redevelop this project, and I spent some time identifying these items of grading, some pedestrian areas and where we look, you know, the the goal of this redevelopment to satisfy the town's housing and bring it into a nice location where this this location, the Princeton Shopping Center can be enhanced by a beautiful building and a residential project that Avalon's bringing, that our goal is to also continue to improve the existing shopping center in its aesthetics and its ability to process its operations, the vehicles that access here, improve the the stormwater management that the sites currently has, improve the pedestrian circulation and the ability for bikes to visit this site as well. These are all goals kept in mind that the design team worked very hard to propose, put together the set of design plans that are in front of you. I think at this point, I'd like to go to the next slide, which would be Page Two. And I'm going to have to zoom out so you can see this.
Page three, I think, there, right?
I'm sorry, page three of the package. And if, you know, following along on the on the hard set of plans, I'll give you a brief description again. This drawing has been prepared by Bowler Engineering. North will be to the left side of the page. And essentially, it's the same drawing that's in your package of C302. And what we've done is enhanced it for color to identify the different elements. Let me just zoom out a little bit further so you see the full thing, the different elements of the proposed improvements. As I mentioned, you can see that a portion of the existing retail building, the southernmost building, had to be demoed to propose and bring the to provide space for the proposed building, the Avalon Building. Now, I'm going to generally discuss the building, but the the architect will obviously go into a significant detail with it. And I don't want to take any of his thunder. And in regards to traffic and circulation and parking, I will be talking about the circulation and the parking pedestrian and vehicle circulation, pedestrian circulation, et cetera. The traffic engineer is really going to focus on really the number of trips in and out of the site and and what I'll call the traffic stuff that I don't understand. I'm going to focus on the site-related items. And please feel free to ask the question if it is related to traffic. And I'll be honest and fair to say I'm going to have to wait for my traffic engineer to respond. I want to stay in my lane relative to the civil engineering design. As I mentioned, we're demoing approximately 16,447 square feet of the existing retail building, the the southernmost retail building, which leaves a balance of 8,897 square foot building. We're proposing to maintain the same building, just cut it off and and refinish the the end of the building that was demoed and enhance the the aesthetics of it as part of that. Along with that, as I mentioned, out at the part of this project, what's being demoed is the Walgreens portion. And that is being relocated out in the southwest corner of the site. And that building is 10,189 square feet. So if you're just following along in math there, we're actually reducing the square footage of retail throughout the site. We're demoing 16,447, coming back with 10,189 square feet. So the amount of retail is actually being reduced. And then in regards to the larger tan building that is shown here in the, what I'll refer to as the southeast corner, is the proposed Avalon Bay Building. Now, that is a four-story building with 200 residential units and also a wrapped parking garage. So you actually don't really see the parking deck. It's hidden behind the residential units. And again, the elevations, the architect present will show that very nicely. And within that parking deck, we'll have 300 structured parking stalls. In addition, there are two additional parking stalls that are along the south face of the building that are parallel stalls. So in total, that development will have 302 spaces, which again is fully compliant with the requirements of parking for this project within the zone. I want to also point out with the proposed Walgreens, again, coming back and reconfiguring the parking there. Just in general, we're maintaining a total of 960 spaces throughout the Eden Shopping Center, Princeton Shopping Center. And that too is in compliance with the ordinance where 912 parking stalls would be required. Some of the key elements relative to this this project, again, as I mentioned, was maintaining functionality, serviceability to the existing shopping center, providing safe and efficient movements with now bringing introducing a residential development here. And I think the goal here was to really enhance the aesthetics of this of the site by also adding some aesthetics, beautification and enhancements in the courtyard area that you'll see some scored concrete sidewalks decorative with some benches and and seating areas for the residents that would use. So this area will be enhanced, there'll be some additional lighting provided in along there and landscaping on the fire pit area, things to that nature that'll make this a nice place for its residents to to utilize. You can see in the center courtyard of the building, there's also a very nice amenities area that I won't go into any detail with that. It's fully enclosed within the building, so it's not visible outside of the site. But our landscape architect and our architect will will touch on the amenities within that as well. Couple of nice benefits of all of this. And I mentioned the pedestrian circulation coming from the site and getting back to the retail facility itself as well as to the park. We've maintained the same sidewalk along the southern property line to a five-foot wide asphalt sidewalk. It's actually going to be maintained 20 feet from the property lines with the exception of an area in the back right corner where it gets down to about 13 feet. But everywhere else, it'll be equal further distance than where it was previously. And within that that space, then, or buffer area from the sidewalk to the residence of Clearview Avenue has been maintained in terms of distance. In regards to additional pedestrian circulation, obviously, we're maintaining all of the access from North Harrison into the shopping center, but really now providing a really nice large sidewalk that is decorative and provides a safe conveyance of of pedestrians back to the park. Obviously, with the a large residential, a residential project here, we're going to be introducing more pedestrians right in this area. And we're providing sidewalks, crosswalks to get into the park as well as to the balance of the shopping center as well as over to the proposed Walgreens. Again, everything in terms of signage and the striping will be in accordance with the MUTCD for for safety. We've had some discussion in regards to that of maybe some ideas enhancing it, but we're all in years for that. And and again, the the key here is to make this a nice pedestrian-friendly site that resident, new residents that would be living here can utilize the park, can utilize the shopping center or any component of it, or just get out to North Harrison Avenue safely and walk along the streets. And that's what I think we've done with how we've proposed the location of the sidewalks, the signage, the striping, things to that nature. In regards to the site circulation, one of the nice parts about this project as well is under current condition that I mentioned, there's a one-way drive aisle that's along the east side of the building. And a lot of the deliveries that were required for the southernmost building required the vehicles to circulate along the south side of the project, closest to the residence. As we've looked at this design, we have eliminated the need for any of the existing truck traffic that's onsite for the deliveries to the existing retail facility as well as for the proposed Walgreens to not utilize the the drive aisle along the south side. And we've signed that as well. Reason for doing that, we've modified one drive aisle on the the north side of the the Avalon Building to be wider to allow the trucks that provided service and deliveries to the what easternmost buildings to circulate back out to the main loop road and then come back to the traffic signal. And then any vehicle delivering to the Walgreens would then circulate back in front of the site or the buildings closest to North Harrison or utilize the the exit drive immediately adjacent to the the facility. Therefore, providing safe movements for vehicles as well as pedestrians or bicyclists that are coming from North Harrison to get to the park can utilize this southern drive aisle in a nice, safe fashion. Again, the sidewalks there for pedestrians, the drive aisle itself is for only vehicles only for the Avalon Building and or circulation for cars that are utilizing the shopping center, but it's cars only and not the delivery vehicles in for that. In regards to some other nice features, again, we've have decreased the amount of impervious surface for this project with the proposed landscaping and landscaped islands. In accordance with that, our intent is to, the design intent is to meet the new stormwater management regulations. With that, by reducing impervious coverage, we're going to reduce the the stormwater that's leaving the site as well as improving the water quality of the water that leaves the site before it gets back to Harry's Brook. And in general, the the volume of water that's leaving or recharging into the ground because we've created more pervious surface will will meet the the code as well. Now, I have had some comments from the professionals and I've spoken to your professionals. As I mentioned, it's been great to work with the Princeton Professionals. I know your your stormwater management expert is also on the call this evening, Mr. Purcell. We've had dialogue, I have had dialogue with Mr. Purcell, and they've made a couple of recommendations. We've responded to them in terms of compliance with his with his request. There are a couple of other items that we would be looking at. And just to give you a flavor of what they're talking about, and I think we could see is potentially even providing a little bit more green space by eliminating a couple parking stalls. And we've looked at an area, and I'm going to refer to the southernmost stalls that are between the Walgreens and the Avalon Building to make that island larger. Again, reducing some more impervious, creating some either a rain garden and or potentially utilizing it as a bio-retention swale. As you can see, we have islands in the in this area that have the ability to do similar to what's out there, but we can have stormwater roll into that, perk into the ground. Unfortunately, it's not the greatest perk conditions in this site, but we can allow that to do, slows the water down, lowers the peak runoff leaving. So there are the types of ideas. And I know Mr. Purcell seeing his letter, there's going to be some items we're going to work with him to comply with. But we're, our intention is to do so and to go above and beyond than just the bare minimum of what's required. We do meet the current standard today, and we're looking at a couple of other features to improve it beyond that. In general, the the other aspects that I think are important, I I mentioned a couple in terms of of operations. The Walgreens will continue to have similar number of employees. It's a little bit smaller building, but in general, it's a 68 employees there on a shift. The hours of operation are intended to stay the same, which are currently 8:00 AM to 10:00 PM. And the number of deliveries too will be similar in numbers and staying the same where they 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 take two tractor trailers, which utilize the loading to the to the south side of the building and continue to would would then circulate again in a counterclockwise direction to exit the site. So the operational items, other than really eliminating trucks driving along the the closest point to residence, is really going to maintain the same, but it's been improved for that reason. Couple of other things, the the Walgreens building is proposed to have a drive-through as as noted on these plans. In today's world, I I, all of the new pharmacies that have come into into shopping centers and things and standalone, they require the drive-through. In today's COVID world, it's a great aspect. It's not a drive-through, please don't think, and if you ever think, see a fast food, it's not like that. They typically have somewhere between 15, 20 vehicles in a day come through that. So it's a low volume, but it does provide a valuable service to the customers of Walgreens. I want to hit on a couple of other key components. There was, in terms of lighting, the intent here is to is to continue what the shopping center has, so it doesn't stand out. The light fixtures and all the lighting design is fully compliant with your zoning requirements. The light poles will be matching with LED fixtures. There's a blend of them that we have 25-foot high along or within the parking areas to provide safe lighting for its for the this vehicle circulation as well as pedestrians. We do have some lower light poles that are along the drive aisle that are 20 feet high. And again, everything is in compliance with the code in terms of where it cuts off the zero-foot candle line. And we have some lighting that was proposed in and along the sidewalk that is lower lights or 15 feet more decorative fixtures. The details are provided on the plans. And again, in accordance with your ordinance and providing a nice look as well as safe and efficient design for safety there. There was comments, and I'll touch on it now, relative to the signage. And Mr. Hoff mentioned that the the architect for Walgreens isn't going to be testifying tonight. He'll come back at the next meeting. So he will go through the elevations and some of the features of the building itself. But I wanted to touch on the zoning aspect of the signage, and there was a question. There was a question or comment if there is a variance associated. So I'll touch, I'll I'll hit on that at this point. Walgreens itself has, and actually, let me take one step back. In terms of signage for the site with the added Avalon Building, we do have a monument sign, and essentially, it's going in the same location as the existing one identifying the Princeton Shopping Center is, which is in the the southwest corner of a driveway. It will be replaced with a newer, nicer-looking sign, in my opinion, a monument sign that is in compliance with the ordinance in terms of size. It's approximately, it's 64 square feet. It has uplighting to to provide illumination, identifying the Princeton Shopping Center and the Avalon Building. So that sign is just going to be a replacement of what's there today, but adding the Avalon logo so that it identifies the entrance closest to where the Avalon Building is. And again, what I what I failed to mention earlier and why we want the signage here, the access point for the garage for the Avalon Building, you may have recalled and seen in early renditions that we had that access point facing south towards the residence. Avalon had redesigned the building and has relocated that to the north side of the building. So all the vehicles that would be entering and exiting the garage will be coming out of the north face of their building and towards the, what I'll call, the eastern side, but the parking lot that's behind the shopping center, the east side of the shopping center. That drive aisle there is a one-way circulating driveway. It's it's designed appropriately to have vehicles come in, and it's signed for residents only. There is a roll-up door there, so the general public can't pull in there and start circulating around the building. So that's or the parking deck. It's not intended for anybody to park in this garage that is going to shop. It's for residents only. So we have a sign there identifying that. I also want to identify the the loading area for the Avalon Building. There's a striped area here in this corner, again, north face, and call it the, it's the northeast corner of their building. And then there is the location where residents on the move-in and move-out cycle or any other type of delivery necessary at the time for the building. that can use there. And again, that loading zones in accordance with your ordinance and as well, and it is this type of operation in for for an Avalon Building is scheduled deliveries. So in other words, are scheduled move in and move out. It's all coordinated through the operational folks on site and they'll schedule it with people who are coming to move in. The vehicles there writing their leases, they're not allowed to bring tractor trailers in, you're not bringing your Mayflower. These are obviously smaller apartments. There are restrictions on the size of that vehicle. They're typically the the straight box U Halls ten to fifteen foot boxes that sit in here and can circulate here very easily. And obviously Avalon is a national name that operates hundreds of these facilities throughout the country and you you can and they know how to do this efficiently and safely. So this whole area on what I'll call the utility area for their deliveries are coming in here. Just in general, I mentioned utilities. The the site itself is obviously serviced with utilities as the building has. And we're going to be reutilizing the existing loops. Obviously, the new buildings have generated the need to relocate and and slide things around. But the the services, including for the Walgreens, the sewer, the water will be coming off the existing loops into the Walgreens building, the electric and and communications as well off of the existing poles that are out on site. The utilities for the Avalon Building on the north face, everything underground, the the loop of a water main around the building, the water utility rooms are along this north face. Again, those items would come in underground and be inside the building to service that building. Again, it should be what will in terms of where our proposed improvements are. All you can see where the disturbance is, we've confined it there. So there's no need to go offsite to pick up anything. And we're not asking for new connections. We're really just tying into the existing ones that are onsite in the loops and maybe enhancing them for for the new buildings. I started again on the signage and forgive me for for jumping there because I forgot to to mention that utility item. I mentioned the Walgreens. The Walgreens itself has five signs on the building. The, okay, I'll call the strict interpretation of the ordinance is if there's more than, if you have one frontage, you're allowed one sign. So in this case, North Harrison Street would be our frontage. However, our primary customers and where they would be coming from and looking to utilize this facility would be either coming from the shopping center or the parking lot. We need signage and our main entrance is in the northeast corner of the building. So within that area, we have a an identification sign that says Walgreens. And that sign itself does require variance for size and that's the one variance relative to size. We're requesting seventy four square feet to identify Walgreens. We also have a sign for pharmacy that's along again, the north face of the Walgreens building. Again, important to identify where the pharmacy is and the drive through. And the drive through, as I mentioned, is on the west side of the building. So there's a third sign on the north face which identifies the drive through for the Walgreens. That again is a small sign. I call it more of a wayfinding sign. It's three point three square feet. The other advertising signs that we have, there's two additional on. There's one on the east face that's twenty four square feet that faces in towards the parking lot and the residential development. And there's one on the west face, again, facing North Harrison Street. In my opinion, these signs, though we're asking for variance for numbers, these signs are on different sides of the building. So you don't get a clutter and the size of them based on the scale and size of the building. Again, the architect will get into these and they'll show you the elevations. Don't create any clutter or over signage on the building. Matter of fact, most of the signs you can only see one at a time in that essence, except for the north face because they're on separate sides of the building at ninety degrees to each other. So I think that effect and the the aspect that you have, in my opinion, multiple frontages, though they may not be public roadways, you do have multiple frontages because of the how the position and the location of the building itself, which justifies the reason why we have signage on multiple sides. The other signs, as I mentioned, one was larger than allow. The other ones are within the square footage of allowance there. Touching base on the signage for the remaining building, the retail building that is to remain, we are proposing four new signs in accordance with the or sized in accordance with your ordinance as twenty four square feet. We anticipate having two new tenants there. We viewed that based on, again, prior, maybe it's interpretation of these buildings. If you look out there, there's numerous signs for each of the tenants. Not just one sign for the entire center because you have one frontage. So it was a little unclear on that interpretation and the language in the ordinance. But we conservatively are noting we're adding four signs to that building. And it could be interpreted that you have one frontage, only one sign on that building, but we're proposing for new ones on there. Lastly, signage on the Avalon Bay Building. This building itself again has multiple entrances for different, primary entrance for someone who's coming to rent. And the entrance to that building is along the west face. So there is a sign there identifying the Avalon Logo and essentially the main door to enter. There are also other entrance points along the north face, which also generated the need for signage. And some of these signs too, by the way, and again, the architect will go into these. Two of them are vinyl signs that are actually on windows. So they're not advertising signs. It's just identifying a location to enter the building for the residents. If you're walking around or you've parked elsewhere and you're coming to visit. So there's a sign that's located on the north face near the entrance point. There's two signs that are located on the over by the entrance to the garage. And I mentioned that before, one of those signs is to just say for residents only there and another one's for the Avalon symbol. And again, those signs also are rather small being four square feet and eight square feet. And again, they're not visible to anyone other than customers, residents that are in the parking lot themselves. And and again, I almost call them wayfinding so that somebody doesn't inadvertently enter the garage or try to because it's it's clarifying that's not for their use. There's also an access point that's on the north side of the building or the two parking stalls. Again, that is a vinyl sign that's in windows. And again, I'll let the architect discuss it. But in total, we do have six total signs, one that's along the south face. We have two along the west face and then three along the 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 north face. I wanted, I think that gives an overall general description of what it is and I'm going to touch briefly on the landscaping, but as mentioned and and stated earlier, we have a landscape architect that we intend to testify tonight to get into a little bit more detail than myself. I want to mention in regards to the area along our south side. We are proposing to put back evergreen trees there. We've had to remove some to realign that driveway. And I and I want to hit on a key point that was braised in the professionals reports about the grade and the slope along this southern property line. I made it clear in essence that I hope that the grade of the existing retail building, the southernmost building is about six feet lower than the grade of North Harrison Street as well as the properties that are due south along the backyards of the properties along Clearview Avenue. When you're in that scenario, the parking lot grades towards the building at a slope for the parking stalls under existing conditions. You can drive obviously and change grades easily. When you put a building there, we need to maintain a finished floor elevation. And two key elements, I mean, obviously for ADA compliance and to make sure that there's no steps in between things. You can see the proximity of the Avalon Building relative to the two adjacent retail buildings. Our finished floor is essentially the same as theirs at that point. And from an engineering design standpoint, it needs to be and has to be so it can be accessible so that people can walk without climbing steps between either those buildings and or from the parking lot or the ADA accessible route to get into the building. As we travel to the south in that footprint of the building, it's staying flat. Now, with the exception that the architect worked very hard, understanding that as we move to the south, the grade in the parking lot goes up, as I mentioned, about six feet to those residents. If we cut it and maintained it completely flat as we got to the southernmost portion of the building, that building would cause the parking lot to be cut six feet. And what we've worked with and and tried to do is we've modified some grading. We've had to cut some prop area and we've also had the architect take a two foot step in the building so that it can and with ramps, so everything's maintained accessible. But we've really done what we can to bring the building up as high as we can, knowing our pinch points or our tie in points to the existing site. And then from there have had to modify the grading to allow the circulation and access into the floors. What that has done is generally lowered this ring road between two feet in the rear or the eastern side to about four feet in along that south or excuse me, the southwest corner of the building. Now, I mentioned before, if we lower it, I have to get back to the existing grades of the residents along this along Clearview. So what we've done is taken a three to one slope to generally grade up from the proposed sidewalk. Again, we want to maintain pedestrian circulation. So we have our drive aisle, the sidewalk that's flat, that is providing the pedestrian circulation. And then we're sloping up at a three to one grade. We use three to one. It's an industry standard that we know we can maintain the lawn. It's not too steep that you can't walk up and down it. It is steeper than what it is today because it's relatively flat there. But it is a good balance in terms of the reason we use that is that we can can keep as much existing vegetation that is along mature vegetation that is along those residents. Everything that's up right along the property line or within the first ten feet of that property line is the most mature vegetation. It's been there the longest and has the most growth. We tried to do and balance and keep that as much as possible by using this slope. And the reason I say that too is when you, if you walked out there, you know, you see that some of those residents do have gates and they walk onto the site. That still can be done. I think we've struck a good balance between good engineering design practice and trying to minimize the regrading of items and being able to keep as much vegetation as possible and still keep everything accessible. So that's a key element relative to how this design and and there's some numerous comments in the professionals reports that I hope that addresses and and I can hopefully provide additional question, answers to any questions that may come up from your professionals, the board members or public. Rick, if I've left anything out that you want me to hit on, I think now's the time to 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 remind me.
No, any any specifics I think we'll probably cover when we get to, you know, board comments and professional review letters. So I think that provided a good overview of where we are on the site. And with the pleasure of the board, we can, I think it would make sense maybe to have Mr. O'Brien present some testimony as to the Avalon Building to kind of complement that testimony. But again, it's at the pleasure of the board how I'd like to proceed at this point.
Madam Chair, before we do proceed, can I advise everybody of the current attendees? We have fifty one participants and that would be for twenty five twenty five panelists and twenty six attendees. That's all.
Right. Thank you, Carrie. And there was, there was a request in the chat box that the attendees be identified by name. And we don't, we don't do that. We don't do that to protect people's privacy. So I just wanted to to address that question directly. And in fact, we're we we probably need to, we do need to disable chat anyway because it is not a legitimate way of communicating at a at a meeting like this, unfortunately, in a in a official public meeting. So are there questions from the?
Can I, I just want to clarify. The question specifically mentioned that in a public meeting, you can see who's there. And this issue has come up on the council side and we were advised by the municipal attorney that yes, you can see people in a public meeting, but if you don't know them, they're not required to identify their name to you. And so extrapolating that to a virtual setting, it's considered a privacy violation or so we were advised by municipal council to identify people's names. So just just to clarify that.
Okay, thank you for that.
And I'm sure I indicated that Mr. Cahill was off the hook for the time being, but I did want to ask one follow up question of him. It's usually one I start with and skipped, which was Mr. Cahill, you you indicated there are certain sign variances that we described and I'm going to talk more in detail on those when we get to the particulars of them. But with all other aspects of the project on both the residential building that's subject to the existing redevelopment plan as well as the renovations to the retail building and the construction of the Walgreens. Do they comply with the applicable standards, both in the redevelopment plan as it relates to the residential building and the shopping center zoning as it relates to the other two improvements?
Yes, they do.
So height, setback, zoning. We didn't get into those particulars. But you would agree, and I believe staff reports concur that it does conform to all aspects, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Didn't want to leave that stone unturned, Madam Chair, so. So.
Are there questions from board members for Mr. Cahill? I I know, Mr. Hoff, you were looking to go straight to the architect, but I I think we would like to take a little bit of time to pose questions from board members.
No problem.
You're you're muted.
Tried to use my spacebar to unmute, but it wasn't working. Couple of minor detailed questions. One is for the parking for the Avalon Project, the hundred, the three hundred spaces that are in the parking garage. That's based on a standard of one point five parking spaces per dwelling unit. Are visitors to those dwelling units going to have access in any way to the garage? I I understood Mr. Cahill to say that the public or shoppers don't have access, but I'm just curious whether that number of parking spaces includes parking for visitors or without, whether they'll be on the surface. And as a follow up, you know, do you feel, does the applicant feel like you need three hundred spaces in the garage if it does not include visitor spaces since the standard is sort of supposed to include visitors?
Yeah, the standard and that those spaces do include visitors. So when you do come in and you would, there's the ability to buzz your your perspective visit person you're visiting and they can buzz and let you in. So that's how that would work and it would be intended to self contain the visitors for the residents within that garage.
Great, thank you. I also noticed on the site plan, the perimeter of the area of disturbance has a strange sort of finger poking out by Grover Park that's in the northbound lane of the ring road. And I was wondering if you could explain why that narrow protuberance on the area of disturbance.
Certainly, certainly, it's a great question. In regards to that, there's, there's actually two areas that we're modifying, but I think what you're referring to is we have an area of pipe run, stormwater pipelines, and we also have two water quality devices that are added there. So this area, there's, there's approximately seven acres of disturbance. The parking lot areas, the roof, the roof areas for the building, et cetera, are all being captured. And they're coming down and again, because of we have to basically reroute some things because of the the new building going in. We had to run some new pipe and to do so and get it into the inverts that exist out there, we're running these pipes underground, hence doing that. And I want to emphasize the fact that as part of that, we are adding two water quality devices that don't exist there today that will only improve the water quality for the water that's being discharged into Harry's Brook that that isn't being touched, you know, under current condition. Again, speaks to the benefits and the improvements of what this redevelopment is going to provide.
And then my last question. Does you are a little bit vague about some of the above and beyond stormwater improvements. I understand if you're still in negotiation sort of or in the work process with our staff that you don't want to be more specific about that, but I think the board will want to hear more. more specifically what, what those above and beyond measures are going to be ultimately.
Certainly. So when, when we look at reducing impervious coverage and also complying with what the new regs did to our, to our design, which basically there's some technical items we had to comply with to, to do it. The point being is we would fall under the regulations as shown today by reducing impervious coverage, the volume of water that leaves, the peak would be reduced. There was a comment from your professional which is, is valid and we would address, but the water quality is improved and the amount of water that gets back into the ground is improved, meeting the regs because we're reducing impervious coverage. And what through dialogue and some suggestions and some ideas to try to go above and beyond and improve the downstream conditions, both from a water quality standpoint and from a peak flow standpoint. We've talked about a couple of items and like, and like I said, you're right, I am, I'm being a little vague, but we're going to get there because some of those items, you know, we need to work through with your professionals. There's some things that we looked at and had concerns and we're going to go through that. But I mentioned reducing some additional parking, surface parking, which will increase the amount of pervious service, decrease impervious. Adding additional rain gardens and or bio-retention swell, which again serves a purpose of improving water quality, reducing the, the flow, the peak flow rates. And that really, as I mentioned, isn't required today because we've met the regs, but we've talked to the owners, my clients, and we're agreeable to, to work through a few more of these items that will provide in my, you know, above and beyond what's required than just the regs. I hope that's, provides some clarity.
Yeah. So I, I guess what you're saying is we'll hear more on the fourteenth?
Yes. And in regards to stormwater, I will have to, after working through a few of these details, provide more specifics to it. Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. That's all.
I would just add to that, the, the more you do to reduce overall runoff, increase the uptake of stormwater with vegetation, et cetera, will benefit, you know, obviously not only people downstream and people who live at Avalon here, but also potentially depending on when and if the town moves forward with the stormwater utility. It will benefit Avalon over the long term by potentially lowering the stormwater fee that you otherwise might pay if you that I, I'm, I'm getting ahead of myself, but I, I, and getting ahead of the folks in town who are noodling through, you know, figuring out how really that's going to work with, with the stormwater utility, but, but Princeton is moving in that direction and council has expressed a keen interest in it. And there's very smart people working on it and so it, it's, it's something to think about.
I appreciate that.
Mr. Quinn? Not hearing you.
Oh.
Oh, there you go.
Sorry. Oh, sorry. My microphone was offline. I had a couple of questions related to the, the signage variance with regard to the Walgreens building. A statement was made that none of the signs would be, that it wouldn't be sort of visual clutter because there, there aren't two side, two signs on any one side of the building. Was that, am I remembering that correctly?
I was referring to, there are signs on, two signs on the, the same side of the building.
Okay.
You can see it, yes, that would be the north face, but the point of when you say, hey, we're allowed one and there's five, they're spread out. And, and they are on, two of them are on complete opposite sides of the building or three of them are opposite sides of the building. So again, and, and the size of them relative to the size of the building. In my, my opinion, they're, they're scalable. They're not going to be overburdening. They're also providing some utility aspect of it that, hey, you are pulling a, a primary service that the residents are used to having, it's going to move outside of the shopping center. So you're not only advertising and identifying Walgreens to the traveling public, but you're also advertising it to the, the internal public that's circulating the lot. So you have frontages there as if you're on multiple roadways. And that's what I was trying to, to convey. I hope that is clear.
Okay, that, thank you for that clarification. So how are the signs illuminated? And I'm assuming that the illumination of the main sign that's, that's replacing the Princeton Shopping Center sign. Is that going to be lit the way it is now with sort of upward-facing floodlights?
Yeah, the detail for the, the site sign is going to, it shows the upward lighting just like it does under today's condition. So it's very similar. It's just a newer, nicer materials and look that's going in there and in the same location. I understand from the architects and the, the illumination for the building mounted lights, they intend to use a halo-style lighting for those. And I will leave some of that to, to the detail of the architect to describe further. But I hope that gives you some idea that, and you'll get more testimony on that.
Sure, it does. And I, I expect to go further into that. I, I just, I feel I need to point out for the record that that the current Walgreens site store has one sign and it's actually pretty discreet and yet I think people are able to find it. But it's not necessarily saying that I'm opposed to the variance. Don't get me wrong, but I think we, it's, it's a matter to be explored with the, with the architect at that time.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mrs. Wilson, Mr. Taylor has his hand up.
Yeah. Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, just, just a quick question. With respect to the real strength of the project, which is the creation of a neighborhood setting, a mixed-use neighborhood setting. Do you anticipate that the Princeton Shopping Center will take complementary actions to the flow of sidewalks that you're creating? And just as a practical question, what is the width of the sidewalks you're creating? A sense of space and ease and walking and biking. But are there complementary plans that you've initiated or will be discussed to improve the flow around and within the shopping center?
In regards to the balance of the shopping center, I know there's discussions of future improvements and things, but I don't have the details and, and can't really speak to that. But that would obviously, if there's other changes and things, is another a site plan application that would, would be required for some of that. In regards to what's proposed, there are various widths of sidewalks. At a minimum requirement of being five feet wide is where they are. The, the one that's along southernmost, the circulation lane is five feet in width and I don't know if I should insert, let me share my screen again. Sorry. And I hope you, you see my screen. It just, referring back to sheet three of A1. The, this, we're maintaining the same width that exists there today for that sidewalk. In regards to the sidewalks that are up along the parking stalls, again, we've, they're a little bit wider for if any cars, so they're, they're wider in terms of that, the two extra feet. And then the park, the sidewalks that are, what I'll say within the courtyard and complimentary to the, the retail facility, we're really matching what's there, but making it newer and nicer in terms of like a decorative concrete finish. So it looks a lot nicer and plays nicely with the building. And, and then the sidewalk that goes across and over to the park, that's six feet in width. And there was a comment to say, hey, it's right up against the curb line of the island that's there. You know, that, that island is just about twelve feet in width. So we could slide it the one way so there would be grass on either sides of that sidewalk, but that's six-foot-wide sidewalk, which really remember today, I'm sure there's a lot of pedestrian traffic that comes from the ballparks that come over to Rita's after a game or grab a slice of pizza that's right here at this end of the building. And this is providing, you know, great crosswalks where there's great visibility, line of sight in either direction. You know, signage to, you know, to, to stop for pedestrians in the crosswalk and a nice safe area rather than what they do today as we've seen, you know, walk across the parking lot in the drive aisle. So I think that hopefully addresses your question or comment about the sidewalks. Significant improvements there. Was there something I missed on that one?
No, thank you.
And, and Mr. Taylor, just, I mean, for your benefit as well as member of the board, I, I know the board's aware and certainly council is. This entire area beyond what we're talking about tonight remains within a designated redevelopment area. So there are still redevelopment plans potentially in the works for the balance of the shopping center where I imagine those types of issues are going to be visited in greater detail. So this application deals only with the portion that you're seeing here on the screen in color, but certainly I know the, the council as well as this board hasn't forgotten about the redevelopment efforts that'll take place in the future on the balance of the center.
Thank you.
Mr. Quinn?
Thank you, Madam Chair, taking two bites at the apple here. I'm curious because we, when, when we heard the testimony of the planner about the, the shopping center being an area in need of redevelopment. The, the planner, the planning consultant spoke at length about the, the sort of overall condition of the, of the shopping center structures, specifically the utilities, the, the sort of plumbing and HVAC systems. So with that as a preface, I'm, I'm just curious as to why part of a building, part of that, that area is being kept of the, of the old building.
I don't think I can answer.
I mean, that, that one I can take, Mr. Quinn, only because
Thank you.
I, I know that the, the direction was that the council is dealing with this in pieces. This part is obviously part of the Affordable Housing Plan. Producing that as part of the third round is of critical importance to the Princeton's judgment of compliance. And so it only has a redevelopment plan for this section. The balance of the site, as you correctly indicated, and I just made reference in my response to Mr. Taylor, is still part of the redevelopment area that analyzed those very issues that you discussed. That area is still the subject of a future redevelopment plan. It's just from the perspective of planning and timing. We just haven't gotten to that point yet. This point and this, this application was more ready to go. Council was more comfortable, this board was more comfortable in recommending this plan with recognition that the balance of the site is going to be subject to a second redevelopment plan. And in fact, as you'll recall, we actually amended the zoning for the underlying shopping center so that these uses on the center as configured as part of this application were permitted. They weren't creating any conflict with zoning. So there was a comprehensive approach from that perspective, but there was the understanding that we would be back talking about the balance of the site to address those issues that you flagged as well as Mr. Taylor with respect to a more comprehensive approach to the entirety of the parcel, which is not there yet as it relates to the balance.
Okay, that said, from a practical standpoint, I would think that it would be less expensive for the property owner to demolish that entire side of the, of the existing structure at the same time, rather than taking it down, building a residential community and then coming back and possibly taking it down again. I, it's just a little confusing to me. It would seem that that it would be more efficient to do it all at once. So I don't, I don't want to belabor the point unless any of my colleagues want to pick up on this.
I'd like to pick up on it and just clarify what Mr., something that Mr. Hoff said, which was that this was being presented now because it was ready to go sooner. Actually, we are under a very strict timeframe in terms of what the court has mandated for as it relates to our affordable housing settlement. So we don't really have the luxury of picking and choosing which areas are or are not ready to go. We have to comply with our court mandate and that is, this is part of our settlement and that's why this is being reviewed tonight. The rest of the shopping center is, as Mr. Hoff said, a redevelopment area and there will be extensive discussions in the public and before this board and at council. And looking what that will, what that will comprise with stormwater and linkages, transportation, pedestrian linkage. But tonight, maybe Mr. Reagan would just like to reframe what it is specifically that we are reviewing tonight.
I, I, I just want to clarify. Go ahead, David.
I, I'm sorry, but Tim was asking a specific question about a building that we are reviewing in this application, which is the remaining piece of the Walgreens building that is being kept intact. And I think his question is a good one, but what we've heard is that the architect for that building will not be testifying tonight. They'll be coming in on October fourteenth. And Tim, you should ask them at that time, does it make sense to upgrade this existing building or would it be less expensive to take it down and do something new here? I think it's a legit question, but we don't have the professional here who could answer it.
And that was my understanding of what I thought Mr. Quinn was asking about, not, not the remainder of the center, but, but the the takedown of the existing building and leaving part of it.
Yeah, we, we just, we've gotten a lot of questions about the entire site and there seems to be ongoing confusion in the community about the entire redevelopment and the two residential sites. So I think it's good for us to just take this opportunity to clarify that there are two residential sites that are part of the overall redevelopment, redevelopment, redevelopment area. And tonight we're looking at one, but there will be a much longer process looking at the overall redevelopment of the shopping center. And that's will be upcoming.
If I could just, I could just add to that from a practical standpoint, we have existing tenants in that section. So we're not at liberty necessarily just knock their building down.
Sorry.
Good point.
Should not have laughed out loud at that, just, okay. Are there other, Mr. Chow, do you have a question?
I, I don't know if tonight's the right time to talk about this with the traffic and circulation, but I, I didn't hear much comment about the accommodations for biking. Presumably you're going to have a lot of kids living in this building and presumably they're going to be heading to the high school and the middle school. And just looking at this view, I don't see how the, the layout has been improved to, to facilitate biking. Like, let's say toward Valley Road. So that I, I'm very concerned about that or, or even, and, and maybe this is tied more to the North Harrison redevelopment and redesign. But I think there has to be a lot more thought and, and addressing the, the design for cyclists and pedestrians, especially kids.
Really important point and yeah. So Mr. Cahill, are you the right person to?
I'm going to, I'm going to add stuff to that, but I, I think you'll hear from specifically the architect on the biking and the storage that is provided internal to the building for the residents themselves. I know, I, I don't want to get into that. There was some comments about some additional bike racks on the, for the Walgreens location, which again is something that we can provide. And, and it's clear in one of your professionals letter that we can comply with that to add there. Relative to the pedestrian circulation, I really believe from a layout standpoint and what is there today in terms of, let's, let's call the kids that need to, that go to the ballpark. We're only improving sidewalks, the number of sidewalks, the location of crosswalks to make it a safer access point and to utilize like Rita's or the pizza place. I think we've done a really good job highlighting and providing a sidewalk that doesn't exist today and that's happening today. So that's a significant improvement. Now touching on the fact that, yes, there could be children within the building. Children within the building on the, you know, but I get it's an apartment building, but still. They as well, um, utilizing both the shopping center, you have immediate access to all of the buildings. Um, if you're going to walk to the pharmacy, we have provided new sidewalks to get across the parking lot. We've provided crosswalks that provide safe line of sight for each of those locations, ADA compliant. Um, and out to the park. So I really believe, um, that has been addressed. And if you look at the sidewalks that are on that site today, we've maintained them all and only improved them. We've also added in and around three hundred and sixty degrees of that building, the ability to circulate as a pedestrian if needed. On the end, you know, within the curb line of the building. So from a pedestrian standpoint, I respectfully feel we've, we've addressed that. Now, in terms of bikes, um, again, where I believe. The sidewalks are for pedestrians in this case and the sidewalk and the roadway, and we specifically addressed today. And I've been to the site numerous times and I see bikes, bike cyclists riding through the site or going back to the park. The fact that we've eliminated truck traffic for the today's delivery vehicles. From that southern area has really made that circulation lane along the south side a better, safer option for cyclists. So I, I think we've knowing, bringing more residents specifically to this location. And the areas of interest of where they would want to get to and go, we've addressed the new. Element of bringing them in, meaning the new residents and have maintained and only improved. For the ones that go there today via walking or riding a bike.
Other questions from? From board members? Mr. Oakman?
Yeah, Madam Chair, I just had, just to, to follow on, on Mr. Chow's comment, and, and I don't know if we need to discuss this further, but I think. I, I, I think, you know, hearing what, what Mr. Cahill said, I mean, I understood, but I think part of what, what Mr. Chow is getting at, and it's a concern of mine as well, is that. You know, you have a, you have this, this, this apartment complex and the, the shopping center itself that are essentially separated from. The, uh, you know, from Harrison Street. Which is, which is the, the direction where people are going to, you know, kids are going to be going both for school and to get to the pool and other things. And it's now essentially separated by a Walgreens, which is, which is car oriented in the sense that it's got a drive through component. And, and, uh, you know, parking there as well. And also these, these, you know, the, the, the circulation patterns that we already have. And I, and I guess I, I'd just love to understand better how cyclists and pedestrians, you know, penetrate. More safely and effectively from Harrison Street into the shopping center and the apartment complex.
Uh, Madam Chair? I was just wondering, can I jump in for a sec? I, I think it might be helpful and maybe the applicant and, um, witnesses can talk about this. Is that even though the, the application is focusing on the southern end of the shopping center and the new construction. There's still a system in place that would still be functioning in terms of circulation. And it's been my observation that most pedestrians leave and enter the shopping center site. From its, um, the intersection at Valley Road, which is a direct shot over to the community pool. And to Witherspoon Street in the center of town. So maybe, um, maybe the applicant wants to talk about where people actually cross Har- North Harrison.
And I, I would just add to that, that with two hundred additional households moving in that don't know that. And they're just gonna like go the way water flows. If they want to, you know, go toward town, they're not going to be looking necessarily. To go to the main signalized intersection and cross four lanes of traffic and then turn, make a left and go that, you know what I'm saying that? Well, I, I, I very much agree with people who are really concerned about this sort of bigger picture circulation and I. I, I understand that it can't all be figured out right now necessarily, but it's, um. Uh, it's important to, um, to understand at what point. Those questions are fully addressed. Mr. Cohen? Oh, I'm sorry, Michael, did you?
Yeah, I was just gonna say that the central plaza, the courtyard is already sort of the central node of. Of circulation for pedestrians and maybe we can hear about how the overall pathway will work and feed people over to North Harrison.
Uh, David?
Yeah, I, I, I'm not concerned about pedestrians. I am concerned about cyclists as Phil mentioned, and I think that. Getting cyclists safely. Over to Harrison Street, you know, it's not necessarily the shopping center's responsibility. To keep cyclists safe once they've reached the public right of way, but. Um, it feels like there's been a lot of attention given to how residents will be accessing Grover Park. You know, but not much attention given, and I'm not. You know, I'm just asking the applicant to take a look at that. There's a sidewalk right now. That connects from Harrison over to this. Uh, to this complex. Could that sidewalk be widened? It looks like it's in a green grassy area. It could be. Turned into a multi-use path so that it was safe for pedestrians and cyclists. That's just one idea. But I think, uh, I do think that it would be great if the applicant could. Give a little bit more attention to cyclists and in particular cyclists who'd be trying to move into town. Rather than around this site.
Yeah, I, I think the shortest path to the school would be to go, what is it, south on Harrison over to Franklin? Um, so you're, you're going to have a lot of, uh, students either biking or walking right, right in that south, uh, east corner.
Yeah.
Yeah, I guess I'll piggyback on that. I mean, I, I totally agree with everybody. Who's spoken about, uh, the concern about cycling. I think that, you know, widening the paths, I think would be good, but also thinking about how. These things, um, connect to the, the broader context. So. You know, I would love to see potentially like a, a ring, multi-purpose, multi-use path around the Holter Shopping Center. Areas so that way people can kind of do a loop and exercise. I, I feel like I'm, I've been doing a lot of loops these days and I. You know, they're, they're very valuable. I mean, and, um, so yeah, I think it, that would be good to, to kind of start that. Um, potentially on that path, outer path on, on the right, when I'm looking at it on the right or the south of the site. Um, but also, you know, thinking about how that connects to potentially North Harrison Street. Um, you know, hopefully we will have bike lanes on, on North Harrison Street, but right now it's, it's a very dicey situation. I, I just biked across it the other day. You know, you're, you're kind of crossing two lanes of traffic. Um, so. Kind of thinking about traffic calming measures there, but also, you know, linkages. So like where the cursor is right now. You know, there's, there's just a regular sidewalk, um, exiting. Yeah, that's, that's good, good, um, indicator. Uh, so, you know, thinking about either, you know, do the cyclists go on the road, which, you know, it's kind of hard to share with, um, you know. Um, cars, but, or do they go on the sidewalk and share with, with the pedestrians? And so that designation should be, um, kind of identified or determined. The other thing which I, you know, I'd be remiss to say, I feel like, you know, I, I could wait till the end to talk about this, but I figured, you know, since we're talking about kind of. Introduction layout type stuff is, um, you know, how fixed? Is the applicant, I guess, Prince Sweet Edens to creating a, a, a auto-centric pad site. Um, for Walgreens. I, I just feel like it's a, it's, it's a huge lost opportunity there to. Turn that into an auto-centric, you know, drive-through, um, you know, pad site. I, I think that. You know, ideally, um, what happens in the shopping center, um, could be something that is highly, um. Walkable, hot, you know, and has a, a nice urban type of feel, a human scale feel. And what, what really concerns me is that, you know, as a pedestrian, you know, living here or coming here. You're going to still feel like this is a place designed for cars. And, you know, I think that, um, you know, Walgreens, you could still have a Walgreens. But maybe, you know, the Walgreens is a different shape. Maybe it's, um, more, uh, along the, the Harrison Street side as opposed to kind of. As the box on the, on the right and a parking lot on the left. And, uh, you know, I, I think it's important to also think. About like setting a precedent for the rest of that edge, um, as we kind of think about the rest of the redevelopment area. So I, I just wanted to put that out, out there. Michael's eager to, to chime in.
I am. You make a great point, and I wanted you to know just for the sake of the knowledge of the planning board and the public. Staff worked really closely with the applicant, trying to get them to reconsider the positioning of the building. We really wanted it to be. Um, the entrance facing North Harrison and to not have a, a drive lane between the building and, and, and North Harrison. But in the end. Um, as you recall, this board did approve a redevelopment plan that calls for a drive-through. Uh, pharmacy. So the drive-through was kind of non-negotiable because we agreed to it already. The town. Uh, acknowledged that that was the, one of the reasons why Walgreens wanted a freestanding site. But we did want them to maybe think about turning the building to really be more pedestrian oriented towards the street, and they had reasons why they thought that wouldn't work. So I just wanted you to know that that, it's a great comment and that was thoroughly, um, you know, um. Uh, we thought about that a lot with the applicant. I just wanted to make that clear.
Well, that's, that's good. And I think I did bring it up when we, we talked about it in the redevelopment discussion. Um. I mean, I, I would still maybe even, you know, maybe it doesn't have to be completely redesigned. But I think that perhaps as sort of like a, um, kind of a compromise is to not have the. The drive-through be on the edge, to push the building to the, the edge and put the drive-through on the other side. And I don't know how, how that affects the architecture, maybe, I don't maybe, for me, it seems like you just kind of flip everything, but. Um, you know, I, I just think that if we're looking at, you know, the edge there, um. You know, i- i- it's much nicer to have a building kind of, you're looking, looking at a building as opposed to a drive-through. Because it, the, the drive-through sets the, the, the kind of the, the message that this is a place for cars as opposed to people.
I understand, um, and Mr. La Place is correct. Uh, we talked about this issue and. To your original comment, how fixed is the applicant on this, uh, configuration on the Walgreens? And to just be candid, very fixed. So I, I don't want to create unrealistic expectations that we're going to be moving this building around. But we're not. Um, we, the redevelopment plan or the zoning as it relates to this. Was specifically tailored to this. And Mr. La Place is correct, there was back and forth, and we do have reasons as to why. This layout is important for Walgreens. Um, so I, I don't. I, I appreciate the comment, uh, but at the same time, I, I don't want to pretend as if we'll come back on October fourteenth. With a different building on the Walgreens because frankly, that won't happen. Um, we're, we're sensitive. We hear the comments about the bike path. We'll take a look at bicycle circulation. I don't know if it changes the configuration because. Anytime you want to change something, to Mr. Cohen's point, you perhaps make that. Uh, bike at the sidewalk area along the buffer a little bigger to accommodate bikes. You could do that. But you're limiting the buffer area to the neighbors. You're increasing impervious to make that happen. There's a give and take with everything and we think on balance. The detriment of that may outweigh the positives, given Mr. Cahill's testimony about calming. The truck traffic in that area and making it, uh, safe for bicyclists as is. Um, I know there's talk about the surrounding areas. May not be, uh, ideal for cycling traffic, but we, we're honestly not responsible for what may happen on other areas of Harrison Street. It might not be a great area for bicycles as it is. We can certainly take a look at how our site may be improved. Um, but beyond the, just the general network, that's not something that we're going to be able to control in any respect. So we'll take a look at it. We're hearing your comments. You know, it's, but I, I wanted to just be upfront about the Walgreens site. That's, that's not something you, I just don't want anybody disappointed come October fourteenth. Where you're looking at the same building you're looking at tonight, because that, that's not going to change.
Well, at least you're honest.
I try to be.
A quick comment about the, the south side there, you know, that's the main entrance and you end up looking at a loading dock as you enter the shopping center. So. Think aesthetically, if that can be. Made as pleasant as it can, as a loading dock can be, that would make the entrance into the shopping center more pleasant.
Point taken, I hope. Uh, any other questions for Mr. Cahill?
Madam, Madam Chair, Jim Purcell here. If the, if the board members are finished, I do have a couple of, uh, comments, questions.
Please, yeah.
Um. First of all, I would like to remind the planning board that, uh, we are in the process, and it seems like a very long process. Of looking at the North Harrison Street corridor from a planning standpoint in terms of traffic calming. And providing bike lanes and things like that. So, um. You know, we may be making it much more, we hope to be making it much more bicycle friendly. Um, and, and then we also, as we are looking at the future redevelopment at the north end of the shopping center. We, uh, the plans, uh, show, the, the plans will have. Um, shared use paths that connect not only the shopping center and the adjoining. Um, redevelopment, but also, uh, the Thanet redevelopments on the other side. Along with, uh, on, heading up Turhune and, and down Grover Avenue with bikes, bicycle boulevards. So there, there are other things in taking place. Exterior to this, to the shopping center that should enhance bicycle and pedestrian, uh, friendliness. Um, there's one item that I didn't hear anybody address, and I think it's a, a question for Mr. Hoff. Um, and, and it's in my memo.
Um, Jim, you were never sworn in, I don't believe.
I wasn't.
Mr. Regan?
Yeah, i- if we could, maybe we can just swear in all of the, all of the, uh, boards, professionals. Concurrently in this way, they're all sworn for whenever they're going to respond, if that, if they're all here.
Mr. Dover Melski, Mr. Bridger, Mr. Scoopian, uh, I think that's, oh, and Heather is.
Heather? They're in Michael's place.
If you can all just, if you're all there and just raise your hand, you swear that the testimony that you will give with respect to this application will be the truth?
Yeah, dude, yes.
So you're all sworn and going forward.
Okay.
And thank you, Carrie. Go ahead, Jim.
There is, there is one minor issue and that, and that is that the lot that's being created, uh, with the subdivision is landlocked. It does not have access to a public street. And I would like to hear testimony as to how, uh, and access is being provided to this property. I realize that the two applicants are, are currently, uh, in partnership over this. But that is not what might happen anytime in the future. So, um, I believe that access easements are necessary in order to ensure that residents can get to. The Avalon Development.
Absolutely, Mr. Purcell, and I apologize for not addressing that sooner. You're correct. Uh, cross-access easements would need to be, uh, recorded. They'll be noted on the subdivision plan so that they're detailed. We are working that out. Obviously Avalon being the contract purchaser to the property, we will work out a form of cross-access easement that will run with the land. So that to the extent that there are a changing of ownerships, that will be a part of record. That the building could then rely on for purposes of access. We'll provide the form of that cross-access as to the board grant approval as a, um. A conformance item to make sure that that's been established.
Thank you.
Okay, um. I think then without, unless there are other questions from the board, we're ready to. Hear from your architect, uh, unless, let me just throw this out there. Um, it's eight fifty. If we take a quick break now, we can come back and hear. Uh, from the architect or we could hear from the architect now and then take a break, uh, before questions, but I'm thinking that that may go on for. You know, thirty or forty-five minutes and maybe now is a better time for a quick break.
Um, Madam Chair, I've had a request from some members that it be more than five minutes, perhaps ten minutes.
Okay, sorry. Uh, okay then, ten minutes. Well, we'll make it nine since my clock says eight fifty-one. Let's be back at nine o'clock, okay?
Thank you.
All right. Thanks, thanks very much, everybody. Almost ten minutes. Yes, great. Thank you, uh. Mr. Hoff, um. Yes. We're ready for your architect, I believe.
Yep, great. Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, if we could get, uh, Mr. O'Brien sworn.
Mr. O'Brien is, uh, if you could raise your right hand, do you swear that the testimony you're about to give, uh, is the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. Just for the record, if you could just give us your name.
My name's Kenneth O'Brien, O apostrophe B R I E N.
And, uh. Thank you, Mr. Mr. O'Brien. Uh, same drill with, as with Mr. Cahill, if you could provide your, uh, first your office affiliation and then your, uh, professional educational background, please.
Yes, I'm a, a licensed architect. Uh. Uh, I work with Looney Rick's Kiss. Uh, you'll see on the plans, uh, we abbreviate that as L R K. And, uh, my, I work in the office in Philadelphia. Our primary office is in Memphis, Tennessee. Uh, I have been a registered architect for, uh. About fourteen years now, um, have, uh, I went to Virginia Tech. I have a bachelor's of architecture from Virginia Tech. And, uh, have presented in front of multiple other planning boards in the state of New Jersey. And I'm licensed in New Jersey.
And that license remains current?
Yes, it is.
And you're familiar with the architectural plans that were prepared in connection with the residential portion of the project, is that correct?
Yes, I've been the project manager on this project, um, from, uh, from the get-go.
Madam Chair, I'd offer Mr. O'Brien as a, uh, qualified, uh, professional in the field of architecture and can offer expert testimony in that field.
We accept his qualifications.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, Mr. O'Brien, we're working from the same A1, uh, as Mr. Cahill first introduced, but I think you're going to take us through. A couple of different pages as part of that presentation, correct?
Yes, I am. Uh, can everyone see? The plan on my screen?
Yes.
All right. Good evening. So, um, here's exhibit A3. See the Avalon building portion of the site.
Well, hold on, Mr. O'Brien, when you say A3, this is actually part of our presentation that we'd submitted. This is page four of that?
Page A, A3.
Of your architectural set.
Yes, it's labeled A3 at the top corner. There's a cover sheet which does not have a number. Um, so I'm, I'm going by the labels that are on the pages.
Okay.
Of the, of the exhibit.
So this is part of the presentation package that was marked A1.
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
That's okay with everyone?
Yep.
Okay. Um, this plan is generally consistent with the conceptual plan contained in the redevelopment. Um, agreement and advances the planning principles, goals, objectives, and design criteria established by the municipality. The Avalon apartment building will be four stories tall and roughly two hundred and sixty thousand square feet with a total of two hundred apartments. Of the two hundred units, a hundred and sixty will be market rate and forty apartments will be affordable. Generating forty-four affordable housing credits for the municipality. There will be a variety of bedroom types, including studio apartments, ones, twos, and three bedrooms. To generate a diversity of residents in terms of age, family status, and income levels, as well as a diversity of price points. The unit mix breakdown is as follows. There's fifteen studio apartments, twelve market rate, three affordable. Sixty-eight one bedrooms, sixty-four market rate, four affordable. Ninety-nine two bedrooms, seventy-four market rate, twenty-five affordable. Eighteen three bedrooms, ten market rate, eight affordable. As Mr. Cahill noted, the parking garage has been reoriented, reoriented to the north side and contains three hundred parking spaces. And the resident garage will be five tiers and about a hundred and eight thousand square feet. Twenty parking spaces will be designated EV charging spaces. And there's a secure bike room with one hundred resident bike racks and bike maintenance equipment. The proposed building will be LEED certified and solar ready. The amenity and leasing area from the Princeton Shopping Center courtyard and opens to the parking lot to the west. As you'll see in the following exhibits, uh, we have some renderings of those areas. The male area centrally, centrally located in the building here. To the north side, we relocated the trash compactor room, the garage entry. And the, inside the garage and garage is the bicycle parking in this area. You'll take note in this plan. Um, it's very light here, but each of these corridors has ramping in it. As Mr. Cahill noted, we worked, um, together with everybody to really kind of try to resolve some of these grading issues on the site. So we have, uh. Uh, luckily, our, our client was willing to take on a two-foot change in, in grade between one side of the building and the other. Um, one other thing I just want to note on, on, on this sheet is you'll see around the perimeter of the building. Uh, there are little sidewalk connectors, um, to the patios and many, to many of the ground floor residences. And that's to improve the connectivity of the, the building, um, to the site and create a nice pedestrian-friendly, uh. Ground floor. Here, um, on exhibit A, sheet A4, we zoom in on the north side plan of the garage area. To the left, you see the existing condition across the parking lot. Um, there's no pedestrian connection, um, really not friendly for. For anyone trying to make their way across this, uh, on bike or, um, or walking. I think Mr. Cahill covered this area. Um, in pretty, in pretty good detail. Um, on the right-hand side, you see a blow up of this area. With, with that pedestrian connection, uh, we'll point out that, you know, there's a loading zone here. This is, this is. Loading for move-in, move-out. Um, there's a move-in, move-out, um, elevator right inside the building here. So. Um, as, as tenants, uh, load and unload, they're going to use this area. Um, that'll be coordinated with trash pickup and trash, the, the trash roll-off, uh, dumpsters are right in this, roll-off dumpsters right in this location as well. Um, this is the garage entry. Here is A5, uh, sheet A5 is an existing courtyard view. Here you see that, um, this end of the Princeton Shopping Center really lacks the visual termlessness. Um, it's dominated by blank walls here, um, down on the end, and there's no anchor generating any activity. Um, sheet A6 shows the same uninteresting facade, blank facade, um, that's at this end of the courtyard. As we move on to sheet seven, here's our, a rendering of. View from that court, same, same vantage point from that same courtyard. Um, as called for in the redevelopment plan, the addition of diverse and quality housing will create renewed activity and vitality to revitalize existing commercial uses. This plan will also promote walkability and pedestrian-friendly mixed-use development organized around the shopping center. The building anchors the south end of the shopping center plaza while integrating into. The shopping center through hints of the mid-century modern aesthetic and drawing inspiration from the materiality of the existing retail storefronts. The building corner that fronts the plaza proudly stretches towards and opens up as a visual anchor to the plaza. This prominent corner dark gray fiber cement volume. Extends out over the glassy and open resident lounge below. The face of the dark box peels away to reveal a copper-clad accent wall which will weather in patina over time. The resident lounge opens out to connect with the plaza. And the retail environment on the north side. And the second floor outdoor terrace overlooks, overlooks the courtyard. The ground-level corner is defined by a single-story horizontal box that's punctuated with small openings, providing hints of the interior programming. Inside until you turn the corner and get the full-height glass wall connecting the interior and exterior. As the building steps back from the anchor corner, it maintains a clean-line contemporary aesthetic with a solid brick base. Smooth gray lap siding, volume above, which is further broken down by balcony recesses. The woodlook horizontal lap siding bays accent the facade and provide warmth to the color palette. The top-floor lots are set back from the main facade, receding into the background with dark gray board and button siding. Windows, balconies, railings, and other trim pieces are dark gray and black to help tie the whole composition together. Exhibit sheet A8 is the existing North Harrison Street view, and this photo on exhibit. Sheet A8, you see the existing Princeton Shopping Center buildings with their low profile and flat roots. Sheet A9, in this rendering, you see the relationship of the Avalon Building to the Walgreens in the foreground. And the reconfigured retail wing to the left. The visual motif established at the retail plaza continues down this facade, punctuated by a copper bay. And a thin canopy element announcing the entrance to the leasing office location. Right here. Can you all see my cursor as I'm moving around?
Yes, we can.
Um, in accordance with the redevelopment plan, the design of the residential building includes thoughtful articulation of the building massing. And employs detailing to enhance the degree to which the length and height of the buildings are scaled appropriately to the context and setting. The design includes flat roofs designed in a style proportion and massing that's complementary of the adjacent structures. Exhibit sheet A10 shows the southern end of the Princeton Shopping Center. This is the back-of-house area surrounded by a sea of asphalt, not an inviting gateway or complement to the ball fields at Grover Park. As we come around to the southwest corner view here in exhibit sheet A11, you see the anchoring of the southwest corner of the building. Announcing the building as you pass Walgreens and enter the shopping center. This corner is held with another dark gray volume with copper accent infill. This prominent corner serves as a breakpoint in the treatment of the facade. As the building massing breaks down even further around the south and east sides to respond to the adjacent residential neighborhoods in those directions. The bulk of the building is visually broken down by a harmonious composition of vertical bays. And horizontal differentiation as guided by the redevelopment plan. Here on exhibit sheet A12, you see the west elevation facade in the material palette of the Avalon Apartment Building in more detail. This refined material palette was selected to be compatible with the Princeton Shopping Center facades, but not be too busy. The light gray masonry serving as the base, building base in the ground-floor plaza corner, single-story volume. The dark gray fiber cement board and button siding at the recesses and the lots and, and some select accent base. The woodlook horizontal lap siding used as an accent. And the medium-tone gray lap siding is the neutral body volume. And then there's the copper accent at select locations. You'll see the leasing and amenity office, uh, entrance here to the left. Um, this is just, uh. In line with the sidewalk that connects past the, the front of these, uh, retail, the existing retail building. And we have a, we have the entrance, uh, shown, um, with this big copper bay announcing the entry and this thin canopy above. Um, here you see the callouts for the, the signage locations, um, with. A, uh, sign on the edge of the canopy here, um, up to two feet high by ten feet wide. Um, we envision that to have some, uh, to have some internal lighting, but it's really just a, um. It's a soft glow at night. Um, we don't want this to, to be bright by any means. Um, and then there's also a small, uh, logo sign, um, that has lighting hitting the wall behind it. Um, and, uh, it's backlit, uh, on this facade, on the side of this facade, which really faces. South, not, um, not in this westerly direction. And that's really a pedestrian-level scale sign. Um, for, you know, for visitors, you know, walking along, um, along this pathway between these two buildings. Exhibit sheet A13, again for reference, is the southern end back-of-house area. Exhibit sheet A14 shows the south side of the building. The building's oriented where the parking structure, structure is wrapped by residential facing Harrison Street. And the adjacent residential neighbors and park. The building massing breaks down to a smaller scale along the south facade as the roof line becomes pitched to reduce. The height of the facade and transition to a more residential feeling composition. The roof line is divided into smaller segments corresponding to the smaller massing breaks below. The facade recesses are clad in darker charcoal colored siding to create breaks in the light gray facade. I will zoom in so you can see that here, there's a darker gray, um, recess. Um, so each piece of this facade feels like it's a more residential scale. Unit on the, on this facade. The building angles come together at this point. You can see it here, um, pretty well. And in this view. Um, there's a single-story frame element which announces entry into the building. Um, this was just a resident entry and you see we're proposing, um, some vinyl signage, um, on the glazing of that storefront in this location. Um, as I noted on the site plan, all these ground-floor units have entries, um, to the street to, to enhance the connectivity and walkability around the property. Moving around to the east side of the building here on exhibit sheet A15, the residential character and breakdown of the building continues along this facade facing Grover Park. The masonry base is also broken down along this facade. Is the south facade. As with the south facade with patios and resident entry connections to the sidewalk. At the sloped asphalt shingle roof, a few lots are tucked under the sloped roof on the east, on this facade. You can see those, um, with some windows here peeking out, uh, through that sloped roof. Exhibit sheet A16 shows a view and elevation of the north side of the building. As the building turns the corner back to the north side facing the shopping center, it transitions back to the more commercial-oriented facade. The parking garage is enveloped in a rhythmic open mesh panel with a framed entry portal. The garage entry has a proposed two-foot square logo sign. A two-foot high by four-foot wide Avalon residence-only sign in an overhead clearance sign band. The trash area masonry wall that transitions. Back into the retail pedestrian zone as proposed to be accented with a mural. By integrating the parking structure within the residential building and having access located on the north side furthest from neighbors, it minimizes visual and other impacts to the adjacent units. Uses, sorry. This concludes my prepared testimony. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Mr. O'Brien. Um, let me, uh, shrink the picture on my screen so that I can see more faces. Are there questions?
Would you like me to announce the, uh, number of attendees that we have at this time?
Sure.
There's a total of fifty-three participants, twenty-five of which are the panelists, and twenty-eight attendees.
Okay, great. Thank you. Um. Questions for Mr. O'Brien? I had a couple of things, uh, Mr. Cohen, go right ahead.
Uh, I, I just was wondering whether he, Mr. O'Brien would like to address some of the comments that came, um, out of the sprab review last week. Uh, there were a number of architectural suggestions. Um, I'd just like to hear his, his. Uh, response to those.
Mr. O'Brien, do you have that, um. Memo from the site plan review advisory board or? Do you need?
I don't have it in front of me. Um, I know one of the comments was about, um. The, the board feeling that, uh, the south elevation was very busy, um, and had too much going on. Um, I will say that, you know, we went through a long design process, um, with many iterations with a client on this. Um, I will say that, you know, we went through a long design process, um, with many iterations with the client on this. Um, and we, we've looked at a lot of different options here. Um, we really felt like this was kind of the best balance of breaking down the massing. Um, without being too busy, um, we, we did look at some, some options where it was a little simpler, but. This is, this is frankly, you know, there, there's not a whole lot of angle here, so it, it appears as a very long facade, um, so we, we didn't want this to be. You know, imposing, um, over here. And, uh.
I think the comment was geared more towards the. The number of materials. Rather than the three dimensional, um. Articulation. Are you, are you wedded to, uh, having all of the materials?
Um, I mean, I think we worked really hard to keep our material palette pretty sparse. As far as buildings go, you know, there's only, you know, three main materials on here. There's a, you know, a, a. A brick, a gray siding, a dark gray siding, and then we have an accent, um, with the wood. Um, you know, I think, I think we did talk a little bit about, you know, there's, there's kind of one day on this facade, it's the dark gray accent, that maybe that becomes. Yeah, maybe that could be wood, um, just, uh, so it's, it's not different on, on this facade and there's one on the. There's one on this, on this facade as well, that's that dark gray accent, but, um. I, I, we, we kind of like the rhythm and, and providing a little bit of difference as you go down the facade and not, not feeling like this was. You know, the same thing repeated over and over again around this whole big building.
And, and Mr. O'Brien, to, to Mr. Cohen's point, the redevelopment plan specifically calls for building materials to be varied. Um, is that, is that lend towards your earlier comment about, hey, listen, it's. It's a large, it's, it's a length that you have to deal with, right? The building is long, so you, you have to create. Visual interest, not through just articulations, but breaking it up with different types of materials? Is that some of the themes you were using to, to capture this design?
Yes, absolutely. Yeah, I mean, we, we. Yeah, we.
For instance, if you, if you got rid of, you got rid of the, um, the copper tone and you go more towards gray. It gives the appearance of just being a larger building at that point, correct?
Right, yeah, the more, the, the kind of less breakdown of material, the more massive this thing is gonna feel. Um, and we, we, we're really, really trying to be respectful of the scale of this, especially on the south and, and. East facades and trying to, trying to break down roof lines, trying to use different, you know, breakdown materials, so we're not using big chunks of the same material. Um, on a flat facade where, where it's gonna feel like, you know, a big monotonous, uh, you know, wall, um. Staring in the neighbor's backyard.
Hey, I don't want to overly belabor this, I guess we'll probably hear from the public and see. How they feel about it, uh, when we get to that part of the meeting. The one other, uh, architectural suggestion that I think the board felt really strongly about was the. The covered walkway that lines the interior of the shopping center. Yeah, the courtyard and, um. Feeling unhappy about the fact that the, uh, the design actually breaks that connection. Do you have any, um? Response to that comment?
Um, I will say that. That's probably out of my purview. Um, I know we had many discussions about that canopy. And all I can say is that as part of this plan, that canopy goes away. Uh, now, I don't know, I can't speak to Edens and what they want to do with, with, with those walkways long term.
Think that probably Mr. Cohen, not to dodge it, but. It's probably outside Mr. O'Brien's scope, probably better directed towards Edens.
Michael, Mr. Laplace?
Thank you. I just wanted to make two comments. I wanted to echo Mr. Councilman Cohen's comments. About the covered walkway, um, as was expressed at sprab. Um, staff was also concerned that such a, such a, um, I sort of iconic element of this shopping center that's been there since it was constructed in nineteen fifty-four. Um, the idea of this, it's been a perimeter covered walkway, so it ties the entire complex together. So we'd really like the applicant to think about. If not completely restoring it and, or keeping it or restoring it or replacing it in its current form. You, you seem to already have some cantilevered, um, coverings over sections of, of where the new construction is, maybe that could be. Enhanced somewhat so that someone still experiences a covered walkway as they go around the courtyard. It's, it just seems like an important, almost historic element of the shopping center, so I wanted to echo that concern. The other thing I just wanted to point out to everyone is that when you look at these architectural renderings. Keep in mind that there are no trees, as trees will be in front of a lot of these elevations. They're not in the renderings so that you can see the architectural details. Sometimes that makes. The building seem larger or more abrupt, but I always try to remember that though, though, there's trees that are already. For instance, in the courtyard, there's mature willow oaks that are, that'll be, um, you know, sort of framing the views, so just wanted to mention that.
And I'm glad you did, Michael, because I, I was gonna remark too that early drawings that, or renderings that we looked at showed. Um, some of that tree canopy and. A, and then the later ones did not, so that we could see the architectural detail, but. I would like to understand it, uh, at some point either from Mr. O'Brien or from the landscape. Architect, um. You know, ex- exactly what that plan is, how much space there is, how, how you're accommodating big root systems underground and making sure that those trees can. Grow to their full height, um, because that will really make a ton of difference to folks who are looking from the south. Um, and I also wanted to ask whether. You'd considered. On the, uh, north elevation, the garage facade. I've seen, uh, garages with facades sort of like that, that have. Um, Virginia creeper or another. Uh, vine growing that i- is not the kind of vine that undermines, um, structures, but instead just clings to the outside and it can. Absolutely transform, uh, a building. I, I think there's at least one in Princeton, um, but there's a, a, a few in Charleston, South Carolina. I, I, I know it's a different climate, but not for long. Um, a- anyway, I, I, I would throw that out as a suggestion again, perhaps for the landscape person, but, um.
Yeah, and that, that will probably be better addressed by the landscape architect. I will note that we did discuss that with the client and. Based on the. The orientation of this facade to the north and being shaded most of the time, we didn't feel like it was, uh. We were more worried that it would never grow, um, well, i- and not look, not look good over time, so.
Uh, other question for Mr. O'Brien, I'm not seeing any hands up, but. Oh, Mr. Tex Arnie, yes.
Yeah, so.
I see your little orange hand up, sorry.
Yeah, there you go, wait on, wait, I can't do that with my, my. It hides my hand, um, that's why I gotta use it. Uh, I mean, first, I, I do have a comment, I, I'm just curious how. I guess Brad or Michael thinks the cantilever thing could work. I mean, to be honest, I don't really think it's that necessary. I don't know if it really works too much with this design. Um, I mean, maybe you could potentially have a little bit of a cantilever in the kind of. Front entrance, kind of main area, the internal courtyard entrance. But, um, I don't know, I just, I, I don't really think it's that necessary. I think also frankly, it's kind of ugly. As it is, um, not, not as proposed, um, so frankly, I. You know, wouldn't mind seeing a way with it. I mean, it is kind of nice when it's, you know, inclement weather and I don't mind keeping it for the rest of the shopping center as long as. It exists the way it is, but. I mean, I think that this design is, is really nice. I mean, I, I, I think that if it looks like this, it's gonna, it's gonna be pretty nice. Um, I do have some questions about storm or kind of landscaping stormwater, which I can save for later, but. Um, in regards to architecture, I, I have questions about kind of those. Ground floor exits or, eh, entryways, so those go from units, but I guess. Would they be kind of designed in a way for people's patios or are they just gonna be like? Doors that go out to the sidewalk? Um, and.
Are you talking about the, the south side?
Yeah, so, so there, there's, um, kind of doors that go from the units. Yeah, exactly. So. Are those, are those just doors that lead to a sidewalk or they can be the, be used as patios for the, the units on the bottom?
Yeah, I'll address that. This is, this is sheet A three and I'm gonna zoom way in, sorry about, um, not having a more detailed plan of this, but. Um, those line up with the balconies above, so they're actually the same size as the balconies above. Um, they're actually a little bit bigger because they extend out a little bit in order to get steps on, so there's, there's a little patio there. Um, a little brick wall and steps, um.
So they can be used as space. I just feel like, you know, as an apart- apartment dweller myself, I feel like having that little bit of outdoor space is, is so key. Um, so it'd be great to, to have that as, as ground floor dwellers. Uh, um, the other thing that I wanted to ask is, so the units on the top, the very top, those. Um, they, are they lofts for the, um, units on the fourth floor? Like, I guess you can't see them on these drawings, but there's. Um, some.
Dormers.
The dormers, those are, those are lofts for.
Mezzanine blocks of the fourth floor units.
Okay, that's good.
Um, also on this facade, you can see that little like recess.
Yeah, so there's like a little wall that sort of partitions it as well, so that we can provide some sort of privacy or separation.
Feel a little private even though you're on the street.
Right, okay, cool. So, um, the other questions I have are related to more kind of sustainability, energy related stuff. Um, I'm just curious how the, a building is heated. Do you, can you say off?
I don't know if that decision's a hundred percent made yet, um. We, uh. Avalon has a standard, but, you know, they are constantly. You know, looking at that standard and by the time we get to. Construction documents, we're still, we're still probably a good year away from that, so.
It's, like.
I can read.
Yeah, I can tell you, one of the comments that came up in the newsletters is whether the building will be all electric and the answer to that is it will not be.
Yeah, well, that's unfortunate. I mean, uh.
Just being honest.
If, well, yeah, I, I guess it's, uh, that it's honesty, but, uh, I mean, I, I feel like, um. You know, right now, um, using natural gas for such a massive building. Fossil fuels in this age in time is, would be a, 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 a big mistake or, you know, not a really good decision. And I, I think that, you know, if you look at the efficiency of heat, heat pumps right now, um, it, it makes a lot more sense. But so I would, I would, you know, ask that the applicant reconsider. That decision. Uh, also in regards to, um, you know, solar, um, I'm just curious what, um, the applicant's stance is on. On solar, I, I know that the, the roof space is a little limited on, on the actual building side. But, um, you know, there's also a massive parking lot that could potentially have, um, you know, trellis. Solar on, on the top, which could provide a lot of electricity.
Yeah, so this building will be solar ready. Um, we'll be examining the rooftop and making sure that we. And do all the things that we need to do to create enough. Area, you know, as much area as possible for solar on the building. Um, and it'll really be an owner decision when it comes, uh, you know, an owner decision when they look at financials when this project's built. Whether, whether the, the PVs are installed or not.
Okay. All right, I think that's it for now.
One of the, one of the other, uh, energy questions was about, um, solar shading. On the south side, is that, you know, permanent architectural shading devices, is that something that you've? Taken into consideration as one of the comments?
Thanks, David.
Prefer not to get into thermal analysis on a planning board meeting. We, we, we live in a heating dominated climate still, um, until global warming changes that, um. You know, I will say that, you know, when you start introducing overhangs and things, there's a whole lot of, uh. Detailing intricacies that go into that, that the layperson doesn't, doesn't always fully understand, um. And it's a, and it's a big cost item, you know, for, for an owner, so, you know, it's certainly something we, we discussed, um, early on in design, but it, it's not something that's included on that project at this time.
Think related to that with the south face, um. Your, your trees, there, there's some tall trees, there, there's some sycamores that front, uh, half of the south side. It'd be great to have, um, more tall trees planted along there, uh, to provide more shading. Uh, on the south side of the building.
I can't personally really speak to the landscaping.
Yeah, we, will the landscape architect, uh, address all that and, and we'll direct that question to him and get his response.
Are these, um, you, uh, I'm sorry, who was I interrupting?
Go, go ahead, Louise.
I was wondering if, um. These dwellings will have. Um, washers and dryers. In each unit or whether there'll be. Common areas or something like that, and where I'm going with that is to. Just put in a plug for. No pun intended, for, um, heat pump dryers instead of gas dryers, for just doing what you need to do to minimize. The reliance on. Natural gas, I mean Zenon's. Point and fills to, uh, about. Energy efficiency, you know, I mean, it, maybe the owner is not that interested in it, but frankly, for just. Marketing purposes and just to be. A responsible global citizen, they really should be interested in this stuff and. We're really trying to make sure that it happens in Princeton, you know?
I, I would say, you know, with my experience with market rate developers, these guys are very interested, so I, I would not, um, I would not shortchange Avalon Bay on that. Front.
Okay, well, maybe I misinterpreted something that you, something that you said before, but, um. One of the energy hogs inside homes is. Is, uh, is dryers and heat pump dryers work great. And there's no reason not to be fitting, you know, new buildings with those instead of gas dryers.
And, and water heaters also.
Yes, that's right, water heaters as well, right?
Yeah, 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 I mean, you know, just not to belabor this point, but, you know, um, natural gas, I mean, roughly. Comprises of, you know, twenty to thirty percent of, you know, greenhouse gas emissions in a municipality. So, you know, if we're gonna actually reduce greenhouse gas emissions and act on climate, we need to stop using natural gas, so. And this is gonna be a huge unit, a huge, um, development and it's gonna be using a lot of natural gas.
Right.
And I, I'd like to add to Louise's point that if you use a heat pump, um, dryers. You don't have to have penetrations through the envelope, so, uh, the, their building is more better air sealed. Um, and so if the, if the heat pump dryers are unit by unit, you have fewer penetrations. And construction wise, you, you save money construct- construction wise as well.
To Mr. O'Brien's point, we're cognizant of these issues and others, um. It's not the design, these things we're not just flippantly rejecting because, you know, they cost too much, because also to Mr. O'Brien's point. Sometimes they drive, you know, the ability to achieve greater rents, but at the same time. These were all issues that we discussed in the context of the redevelopment plan. And the redevelopment plan contains a specific provision about following code standards, so. While we appreciate these comments, I'm taking notes, I'm gonna go back, but. But, you know, the these issues are above and beyond what anything could be required. We're not, again, not being sensitive to it. We are cognizant of all these issues. We'll look at them. But just again, to be candid, a lot of these things likely won't get incorporated. But, you know, we stand, we were encouraged to do certain things, solar ready, things of that nature, which we are doing. They're specifically in the redevelopment plan. But I don't want you to just take our that we aren't doing it to suggest we didn't consider and think of it. There are other aspects of this, including twenty percent of the units being affordable, which comes at a significant cost for us to do. So there are, again, gives and takes to all these things, but we will look at these um issues. But I don't want you to think that just because we say no means we just didn't think of it. There is there is value to these things and it's why we've incorporated them.
Yeah, and I I don't think that they cost more, especially if you think about it to do it on the front end. It doesn't cost more to um to prepare to use uh uh you know, heat pump dryers and heat wa uh water heaters. It it costs more if you convert, if you have to change everything after the fact. It doesn't cost more if you plan from the from the beginning, I don't think. And it certainly doesn't create a code noncompliance. Because if it did, I would have gotten nailed on that.
Yeah, I should also mention in terms of the cost, there's also state incentives. So, you know, maybe if you're paying market rate for heat pump appliances or um heat, you know, HVAC systems, maybe they cost a little bit more. But actually, I would highly recommend looking into um, you know, New Jersey's Clean Energy Program, and they have a multi-family option for incentives and.
With all this, um I I I'm just, I'm not agreeing because I'm not gonna say yes and I'm not gonna say no. Because when we get. When we get around to building it, we're gonna do the best we can and, you know, I. The cost of a heat pump is in a year and a half. I don't know that.
That's Ken's way of saying neither he nor I are allowed to permit us to say we are agreeing to heat pumps in these units.
I I totally understand, but I should mention that, you know, we agreed to the redevelopment plan as is because we were under the pressure of the Affordable Housing mandate. And so. You know, I think that, you know, we could have easily put that in a redevelopment plan, but you know, because of the circumstances, we didn't. So, you know, I think that we should at least try to come to a a gentleman's agreement, you know, a mutual consensus that we can kind of all be happy with, in my opinion.
I don't know about the gentleman park, but yes. I mean, I'm not saying. Gentlemen, I'm saying I'm. So just take it back. I mean, obviously, you've heard us push, so please take it back. Ms. Capazoli?
Oh, yeah, I just meant heard that the LEED certification was mentioned and I didn't hear what level. And I want to make sure it was actual certification or being designed to LEED standards. You know, there's a difference.
Actual certification? We haven't talked about it in detail, but I. I I I can just say it'll be certified at this point. I I think we'll be shooting for something much higher than that, but um but I I can't commit to that.
Okay.
Mr. Chow?
Uh, one last comment about the the um appliances. I think an important issue is it's an equity issue that you you have affordable units. And you you put in a reg regular whatever natural gas um dryer or electric resistance dryer in a unit. The op the the cost for you to put it in is lower, whatever, eight hundred dollars, seven hundred dollars. And and then maybe a heat pump dryer costs more, maybe over a thousand dollars. But then you're passing on a much higher operating cost to the tenant. So you you're increasing their energy burden. So when when you're dealing with. Affordable housing.
We can't do that.
That burden is higher.
No, that's not that, Ms. Chow, that's not accurate. We're we're required to account for utility allowances that go against the total amount that they can pay both in rent and utility allowances. So we can't do that. Um they're they're capped at an amount that they can pay on a monthly basis, inclusive of both rental payments and utility and other common charges.
Okay, well, if that's the case, then uh give them the lower operating costs and you can charge more for rent and fit within the cap.
That we could do.
Thanks, Mr. Chow. Any other questions for Mr. O'Brien? Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair, with respect to Mr. O'Brien, given that his uh testimonies is somewhat limited in the scope uh and his schedule for October fifteenth, would it be possible that, to the extent there's any questions from him, from professionals or anyone else that we can deal with him in totality tonight?
Uh, yes, are are there questions from um from our professionals for Mr. O'Brien? I'm not seeing any, um but that begs the question for uh allowing members of the public. Mr. Cohen, did you have a question, another question?
I was just gonna mention that the we should take some public questions uh before.
Yeah.
There are three members of the public who have their hands raised.
Okay, then with that, I will open uh this part of the meeting to members of the public for um questions directed to Mr. uh O'Brien, the architect. Guess I should ask the board or Mr. Regan, do we wanna invite folks to ask questions of um of the engineer as well? I'm sorry if already.
I think that's really your choice. I I did want to just, before you go to a member of the public, I just want to advise you that I have been contacted by an attorney who has is representing a property owner on Clearview Avenue. And and he wants to obviously put in his appearance on behalf of of those property owners. Um and it might be just best to do that uh before you go to the public. And then he may be one of the people that asks questions.
Okay.
It's up to, I think it's up to you and the board whether you want to allow the public to ask questions for both the engineer who has previously testified.
And I'm sure I will offer too that Mr. Cahill is back on October fourteen, so he's not going anywhere. It was just the availability of uh Mr. O'Brien that we were asking to kind of carve him out separate.
Okay. Let's see, I guess um.
Okay.
Mr. Regan, if we, I'm sorry, what, Carrie?
No, go ahead. I'm sorry.
Um Frank, um if we hear first from um an attorney on behalf of a neighbor, can that individual go on as long as she or he needs to? Or I I'm I'm wondering whether we we might end up with, you know, unable to hear from members of the public because an attorney uh might might take a long time as 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 they would be entitled to as a as if they're formally objecting. So that's my question.
Well, I I think you answered the question. Um and it's a, you know, we could we could go to the members of the public first. I mean, I I as long as he gets an opportunity to 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 speak on behalf of his clients, I think that's all that's that's required.
Okay, Mr. Cohen?
I I just want to suggest, uh I was appearing in front of a another board in a different jurisdiction last month. And they limited the participation prior to completion of presentation of the entire proposal to questions for the professionals and not comments on the merits of the application. And I think that that's a way to um curtail, you know, sort of make sure that we get through in a timely fashion. I'm not sure if the attorney has anything to ask of the architect. But I think that, you know, it'd be appropriate to just limit the conversation at this point to questions for Mr. O'Brien.
Yeah, I would I would agree with that. I think that's probably the correct way to go. Just ask questions at this stage.
Okay.
And the attorney's name is Mark Liebman, so you see if he's up there. His name is Mark Liebman.
Do you want me to promote him?
No, no, Carrie, I'm uh asking if he is one of the individuals with his hands raised, with his hand raised?
Uh, yes.
Okay, here's what I would like to do. A- as we said, we will invite people in to pose questions to Mr. O'Brien uh in the order in which hands were raised. Um and and limit at this time um the 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 dialogue with members of the public to questions for Mr. O'Brien, which perhaps the attorney has, but it won't be a time for the attorney to lay out their whole. Okay, so um Carrie, can you tell us who is the first person and who will be the second person to?
Well, Dawn Day was the first person that had her hand raised and I made her um a panelist and then I moved her back. So I don't know if she wants to address this portion. I don't know. It's can be very confusing because we've had many hands raised since the beginning. So we'll start with Miss Day, okay?
Okay, and we'll ask, I'll ask each person as they come in whether they have questions for Mr. O'Brien. That's what we're doing right now.
Being promoted.
Okay.
Uh, the next person is, uh, I'm sorry, Valerie and then Martha Devilla.
So I my name, I can climb first.
Yes, you'll need to be sworn in by Mr. Regan. Um and then any questions that you have uh for Mr. O'Brien, the the architect, you may you may fire away. Mr. Regan?
Ms. Day, if you could just raise your right hand, do you swear that the testimony and questions you're about to ask are the truth?
Yes.
Thank you. And I guess for the record, your name and address?
Uh, my name is Dawn Day. My address is ninety-nine Meadowbrook Drive in Princeton and my cell phone number in case.
Oh, we don't need that, ma'am. We we don't need that. Thank you. Thanks.
My cell phone number is six. You won't let people contact me if they want to?
No, no, ma'am, we do not, we don't, we do not want or need your cell phone number.
Okay, I'm in the phone book. So my question is, why, why has the agreement been made to uh to end the affordable housing units after a period of years? Why, why do not the affordable units continue on? All the agreements that have been made about uh variances and accommodations to the builder in various ways continue on in perpetuity? Why is there a sunset on the number of affordable housing units?
Ms. Day, I'm I'm sorry, and unfortunately, we're asking questions now of the architect who just testified. And he did not testify with respect to the, you know, the length of 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 uh the affordability for the units. So we're not in a position to respond to that question right now.
The I I appreciate the question uh and it is something that can be asked after all of the testimony has been given. A- as Mr. Regan said, right now, uh this is a time for members of the public to ask questions specifically of the architect related to the testimony that he just gave. So I'm sorry if that seems like a deflection. I guess it really is, but I don't I don't have a I don't have leeway to entertain that question right now.
Okay, so the next, uh do you have any other questions, Ms. Day?
No.
Okay, the next individual.
We'll resume this on the twenty-first of October. I I'm sorry, the fourteenth or the?
Fourteenth.
Yes, excuse me, the fourteenth, so um come back then.
The next individual is Valerie and then Martha Devilla. And we have six people who have their hands raised.
Okay.
We have Valerie, I'm sorry.
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, Valerie, can you can you activate your camera, please?
I don't know if I know how to.
Are you uh are you on a laptop or a tablet or a phone?
I am on a laptop.
Um on this, on the bottom left of your screen, there's a little um a little camera icon uh which probably has a lot, a red line through it. If you move your cursor down to the bottom left of your screen and click on that. There you go.
Okay.
Valerie, can you raise your right hand? Do you swear that the testimony and questions you're um you're about to give are the truth or will be the truth?
Uh, yes, I'm not giving testimony, just asking a question. Yes.
Give us your name and address.
Valerie Cheh, C H E H, address is thirty-one Grover Avenue.
Thank you, go right ahead.
So the concept be of my understanding behind affordable housing was to have these people come into a community. And this building, again, as we have commented before, feels like a big block at the end of the shopping center. And it's sort of, it doesn't invite the community in. It's not part of the community. It seems to be, it is being established as a separate entity, sort of plop down in the middle of our community. And I'm just wondering if there's anything that can be done to make it more integrated with the rest of the housing and neighborhood around it. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Ms. Che. Mr. O'Brien, can you speak to the ar- architecturally to the connections and the? The 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 essence of the question that Valerie is asking?
Madam Chair, I I mean, I Mr. O'Brien can certainly address architecture. I thought the question was more towards some of the circulation stuff that Mr. Cahill talked about. I mean, um Valor is correct. It it's a standalone building. So you you're not gonna have members of the community walking into this building. It's for the residents themselves. I think the issues of connectivity, Mr. Cahill touched on relative to improving pedestrian circulation, uh improving getting in and out of the site. Um we've done, as he indicated, what we could to increase that type of connectivity to the community. But the point is that it is a standalone building. I mean, you you're not, you're not gonna have any, you you don't have a need for members of the public to come into this building, certainly the center. And that's why we've uh capital, we capitalized on opportunities to increase the pedestrian circulation. And why we're going back to take a look at some of the comments we heard about bicycle circulation as well.
Yeah, there there will, of course, be people coming out of the bill, in in and out of the building who who live there. And perhaps between the engineer, the landscape uh expert, the circulation expert, you know, folks can address that question of connectivity, because there are no pedestrian crossings on the south side on that street that, you know, people can walk out their door and go right or go left, but they can't safely cross the street to get to the sidewalk on the other side. It there is this sort of, I I understand that this might not be a question Mr. O'Brien um can answer as an architect, but I think it is a legitimate thing to address with other testimony. My my opinion, I don't know how the folks feel about that, but Mr. La Place?
Uh, thank you, Chair. I just wanted to remind everyone that the placement of this residential component of the overall complex was a was agreed upon when the redevelopment plan was done. So this board and the and other members of the community, you know, did agree to that. was a, was agreed upon when the redevelopment plan was done. So this board and the, and other members of the community, you know, did agree to that. And I think it's important to note that when that plan was being worked on, it was very important to everyone to have the applicant see that the central courtyard not only be preserved and enhanced, but that this residential component be fully integrated and make utilization and, and, and be very, very accessible to the central courtyard and to the walkways that exist as well as new walkways. So I, you know, I just wanted to remind everyone that we took some special care and thinking about how to integrate the new development in with the old.
Thank you for that. Mr. Cohen?
I just, I really do want to give Mr. O'Brien a chance to respond because I think there are some nice things about the way the building is detailed to try to encourage interaction with the residents, uh, between the residents and members of the community. So I, I think there, I think he probably does have something to say.
Yeah, let me, um, just share a plan again, um, just since I'm visual, it's easier for me to talk through. Um, I will note, I will note, Mrs. Wilson, that there, there is a connection here across the, on the south side for pedestrians. You know, and we really, you know, we have this entry aligned with this existing sidewalk along this retail. Um, we're really opening up this building to the, to the promenade or to the, to the plaza courtyard. We talked earlier about how that's really the spine of, of, of of the shopping center and, and, you know, where, where a lot of people move to and from. So we really wanted to open up into that place. You see, there's another entry right here. That's that main, that, that is the main entry that, that goes in that direction, but really connects you to back into this network. And we, we, I think we did quite a nice job of extending that network beyond just our building. Um, I, I don't want to really speak for too far outside of my building because that's not really in my purview. But I will say that, you know, we worked hard to create, you know, a lot of connectivity around and away from and to the building.
Okay, thank you for that. Mr. Cohen?
And I, I will also just add the glassiness of the sort of common room that's under that cattle lever really does engage between whoever's using that space and whoever's in the courtyard. I think the patios for the ground floor units, which only have a low wall defining them, just like the, our neighborhood character standards that encourage porches on buildings to enhance interaction between the residents of, of houses and people who are on the street. I think that, um, there are design features that really do encourage interaction between the residents and, and other members of the community.
Good, thank you. Uh, Ms. Che, do you have any other, any other questions, Mr. O'Brien?
No, thank you.
Thank you. Carrie, have you
Yes.
brought over Martha Davila?
Now, we have five individuals with their hands raised. Um, am I bringing Mr. Liebman over at the end or?
Yes.
Okay, so we have Martha Davila and then Nurea.
Okay.
I'm sorry. Martha, here we go.
Uh, Ms. Davila, can you just raise your right hand? Up, can we see you?
Not yet. There we go. Well, welcome.
Ms. Davila, if you could just raise your right hand, any testimony that you're about to give is the truth, will be the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
And just your name and address, please.
Um, my name is Martha Davila. I live on 46 Clearview Avenue. Um, and, um, as you imagine, we're being substantially impacted by this development. So I have been very interested, paying a lot of attention to it and have read a lot of the reports and have reviewed a lot of the plans. I understand that at the moment I should just be addressing questions, um, to Mr. O'Brien. Some of the questions that I currently have are somewhat intertwined with, um, the site. So, um, if it's okay that I ask some of these questions that are not just specific to architecture, they're, they're
If you, if you could frame them within architecture.
I'll try to frame them.
I am tracking all the people speaking tonight, so we'll, we'll make sure they speak next.
Yes, and, and then next, next time I'll, I'll, um, use to make comments and ask, um, more questions of, of the site per se. Um, Mr. Brian, I, I do have a question about the elevation on the south portion of the building facing Clearview Avenue. You described that as, you know, using the volumes to, um, create a sense of like a smaller scale, a more residential scale. And, um, full disclosure here, I'm an architect. So as Mr. Cohen, we cannot help ourselves. And we always have to have a little comment on someone else's design. That's just how architects are, but you know, I, I think that when I look at the, at that facade and perhaps, um, if, if that facade could be, if we could show that. Is that okay? If we could show that? I think what happens, uh, with that is that the use of materials on the top of the building, that, that gray, the use of that gray color emphasizes that as a very long, as being a very long bar. And perhaps if we, if you could look into using materials, like the same material per volume, might make it, might feel a little more broken up. It makes me think of what you did at, and I'm not saying Mr. Brian did, but what Avalon did on the Franklin side of their development, uh, on Witherspoon Street, which is, they are townhouses. They are continues, continuously next to each other. And by the use of full materials on the each full elevation, it just breaks up. So just something to take in consideration. And the other question I have is I see that the mailroom is facing, uh, the south, uh, on Clearview with, um, an access door and two very large parking spaces there. Does that mean that trucks for UPS and the mail will be parking there throughout the day? And we could have the potential for having idling and so on.
Yeah. Do you want me to address this one by one or let you?
Yes, yes, please. I, I'll have a few more, but
Okay.
I'll try to be brief.
Just on, on mailroom, uh, since we're, we're looking at that, yes, it is, it is located, um, inside this entry on the south side. We really, you know, we, we, it's centrally located. I have to say like we did look at other options for it. But with, with delivery van turnarounds and all kinds of other issues in other places of the building, it just was, wasn't working out very well. So we, we felt like this was our, our best solution, uh, to that. And yes, there, there will be, you know, Amazon, delivery vehicles, you know, Amazon and FedEx delivering to that entry.
Okay, so we have the potential for idling vehicles happening there constantly, like all day long. The, the other question that I had is you have transformers and, and I know that maybe the placement of the transformers is not your you know, it's not your choice, but, um, are there, the transformers are facing us and how big are they? And I see that they're being shielded somehow by vegetation, but are they noisy also? I don't know if you can answer that question, but it's kind of like a blend between the architecture and the
Yeah, they're, they're standard PSENG transformers. Um, I will say we're, we're doing two to keep the, the voltage down, um, instead of one big one.
How noisy are they?
I, I can't speak to that.
Okay, so that's certainly something that we are concerned with. Um, I
And where are those located? I'm sorry.
They don't show up in these views. They're right here. If I go to a plan, um, I will pull up. This is A2, uh, they're right
Right there, yeah.
I see. Thank you.
So, so I, I feel that despite some efforts, um, and I do appreciate the fact that the entrance to the garage and the loading has, have moved to the north side. And that is, that's a big improvement from the initial design. I still feel that the south side facing Clearview, it's somewhat treated as back of house. And it would be great if some of these issues could be addressed. Um, the other question that came out of the environmental, um, review is the fact that the houses on Clearview or the properties on Clearview, not necessarily the houses, but the lots on Clearview will very likely be shaded by this building. And I don't know if, uh, the architect developed any 3Ds that show the shading. We certainly had developed, um, 3Ds because my husband is also an architect that we had shared with the board way back when this pro, project started, that did show that there will be shading of our properties. But we, I don't know if the architect or anyone has developed a study that shows what happens with the building. I know that there's a lot of 3Ds that have been developed to present to the board. So perhaps
I, I will say we, we have a 3D that's geolocated and, um, we've looked at the shadows, but we haven't built in all the grading. You know, there's great differential between
Yes.
properties and our property. So, um, we, we took a quick look at it. Um, I actually was looking at it earlier today because I knew this was probably going to come up.
So, so, um, just as yes or no, our lots will be shaded in the summer, right? They will, they will be shaded compared to what happens now. Our lots now will be in the shade in the height of the summer, starting, I, I don't know exactly when, but I know that it's six o'clock in the middle of July, that will be
Ms. Davila, I just want to make sure that he, he has not presented that. So he shouldn't be offering an opinion on it.
Okay, that's, that's
The board may require it, but at this stage, he didn't present that.
That, that's, that's fine. I
Mr. La Place?
Yeah, I wanted to ask a clarification question of Mrs. Davila, um, Ms. Davila.
Davila.
Davila, sorry. The, the proposed building is north of your, of Clearview, of the houses on Clearview? So the sun would be to the south. So would it be shading it? I mean, and also there's mature plants, trees that are already in place that are north of the houses, aren't there?
Yeah, but they're, they don't provide an absolute wall of shade, right?
No, I understand that. I just, but I don't understand if the building's north of the houses on Clearview and the sun is to the south. I don't understand how it
Isn't, isn't Prince, Princeton is like at 40 degrees or something like that. So the shading is not perfect. It's never going to be perfect. You know, as a north, south, because so, so that's why I'm asking if someone could show us.
That study has already been done. Let's just make sure we look at it, you know, at the next meeting.
Yeah.
A part of that, part of that question should also be how much shade is the mature plantings along the suburbly edge of the shopping center already providing the houses?
Perhaps, perhaps, yes.
I would just like to know that. I think it's part of the question.
Yeah, I, I was just going to raise the question if this is testimony that's going to come back at our next meeting, is there another member of the team who can present it besides Mr. O'Brien? Since we're trying to, uh, arrange for him not to need to be present on the
I mean, no, no, I mean, obviously this was something as Ms. Davila indicated that she had shared and it was part of the redevelopment process and the redevelopment plan came up with a building height and we're adhering to that building height. So I don't know if it shades it, I, whether it does, whether it doesn't, whether Mr. La Place is right, that the sun sets one direction or Ms. Davila is right, that the axis of the earth means it shades another way. I don't know that any of that really matters, so long as we're not building higher than we're allowed to build. All of that's factored into those types of zoning standards which we conform with. So I don't want to, I don't want to pander to this issue and then just tell Ms. Davila, you know, what I would tell her, which is we're, we're not changing the building height because of the shade.
Uh, understood. I think it would, um, be interesting to see that, and if somebody else, maybe the landscape person can, can share it at the next meeting briefly. And I, I understand what you're saying about not, it not changing the dimensions of the building. I'm also sensitive to what Mr. La Place is saying. I think, you know, in the in, in the height of summer, the, the sun's not going to be to the south so much. It's going to be mostly overhead, but even then
And it is a recommendation, you know, it has been the recommendation from your environmental committee to perhaps present this to us.
But, but, but Mr. O'Brien, I mean, to Mr. Regan's point, did not show that earlier, has not testified and so really can't answer, uh, the questions about it right now. But I think it would be an interesting thing to see next time, just so that we know.
Okay, there are four members of the board and the public.
Thank you.
Ms. Davila, do you're done?
I think, I think, um, these are the questions I had that relate to architecture. I have other comments and questions, but I can wait till next week to ask them.
Okay, thank you for that, Mr. Cohen.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, I just want to put in a plug for allowing the board to see this. It's true that we could have considered these kinds of issues in determining all of the zoning requirements, but the reality is we did not see three dimensional massing of this building when we were, uh, developing those, the zoning standards. We did not see a study, a sun study at that time. I suspect that the shading, if at all, will not go far into the backyards. But I think that, you know, there's a lot of design work that's been done since the bulk standards were formulated that will have an impact on this particular issue. And I think it's appropriate to, uh, ask that the board be able to see it.
Thank you.
Agree with that.
Uh, the next individual to speak will be Nurea and then Lisa Seriosol.
Nurea, if you could just raise your right hand? You swear that any testimony you might give will be the truth?
Yeah, that whatever I'm going to ask is whatever.
If you could just give us your name and address before
My name is Nurea D F ten. I live in 22 Clearview Avenue and I've been living here in Princeton for more than 20 years. I have two easy questions for Mr. O'Brien. Uh, one, he hasn't shown
I'm sorry, ma'am. Can you spell your last name?
Sure. D S, D I A Z dash T S and T O M E N A D F ten. My
Thank you.
My first question for Mrs., Mr. O'Brien is, uh, he hasn't shown it today, but I've seen it on the, on the maps of the township. I saw that the affordable housing was a smaller than the regular housing. So I could compare one bedroom affordable, one bedroom regular, and they were a smaller and they had a different shape. So can you tell me why the affordable, they are smaller than the regular, uh, apartments? Or am I wrong?
Mr. O'Brien, oh, okay.
In some instances, yes, they are smaller to than the others in the market rate unit. in the market rate units.
And there are specific standards. There are specific.
We're meeting all standards, um, for unit size and bedroom size and everything else for affordable units for those units.
Okay, but then everyone is going to know who's living in an affordable house and who is not living in an affordable house.
No one knows the inside of anybody else's unit.
But the shape is different. So if you are in this place, you have this shape.
Mr. O'Brien, can you tell this maybe the unit from the hallway?
No, from the hallway, every entry is gonna be the same. You, you will have no idea what size unit is behind that door.
And from the outside?
No, I mean, can you tell, I'm looking at elevations now, which windows have, are served affordable units?
Okay, uh, thank you. Uh, then, uh, I just learned, and I don't know if it's a contradiction. The engineer on one side, they told us that in the south road, they cannot go trucks. Uh, but then you have all the delivery, uh, mail and Amazon going on the south road. Isn't that a contradiction that we cannot have trucks, but then we can have deliveries?
Well, we're talking about different things. Yes, there's move in, move out, loading, there's trash. And there's mail, um, mail's something different. And yes, we, we are proposing to have mail delivery on the south side of the building.
Well, my question is, isn't that a contradiction that the engineer told us that they, they couldn't be truck, that, that trucks were not going to drive there?
The engineer would actually need to respond to that question.
It, it probably has to do with the size of truck, although I, I certainly don't wanna testify on behalf of the outlook. That's probably a distinction that will be made, uh, later on in the proceedings. Yeah. It's a good question.
Okay, and then all my other questions are mostly about the traffic and, uh, would it be possible to make the south road of the, basically the south road as just for bikes? That's something that, uh, but maybe that's for the engineer, not for the.
Yeah, these questions are only for the architect, ma'am.
Okay, thank you very much.
We'll you back next time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so the next two people who have their hands raised are Lisa Seriosol and Jessie Lee Kent.
Okay.
Who we have, I'm sorry.
We will soon have Lisa Seriosol. There we go.
Hello, Lisa. If you can just unmute. Just raise your right hand. You swear that any testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
I do.
And if you could just give us your name and address.
Lisa Seriosol, ninety-eight Olden Lane.
Thank you, go right ahead.
Thanks. Um, it's hard to kind of, um, figure out which of my questions are gonna be appropriate for the architect and which are gonna be appropriate for the following meeting. But I'll start with one that relates to something that was presented on screen tonight. It was a view of North Harrison Street, um, slide ten out of twenty-six. If you might be able to put that up for me so I can elaborate on it. There you go. Um, this, I believe, is the view to the complex from North Harrison Street, correct? And when I look at that sidewalk, my guess is that it is, the image is wider than five feet. Is that, is that correct?
I can't speak to that. That's a civil engineering item and it's, and I did not produce this rendering, so I don't know the exact dimensions of what that, how that sidewalk is depicted.
Usually those slabs are about four to five feet wide, and it looks like there are more than one of them in width. What I'm trying to point out is that you've displayed a situation which we as residents would imagine quite comfortably as people walking and biking, dogs, um, strollers, uh, scooters, all kinds of movement on the sidewalk. But it's not five feet or six feet wide. And the, the point that I would like to make sure that the developer and Edens and the planning board are aware of is that the current sidewalk on North Harrison is not this wide. And that, uh, any advancement of adding two hundred units to the shopping center which is welcomed, um, will also require a lot of re-engineering of the side paths and sidewalks in the areas surrounding, um, the shopping center. For the, for the sake of safety. I should also say that I'm the chair of the pedestrian and bicycle advisory committee for the town. And in my professional capacity, I am a safe routes to school and street smart educator in the counties from Mercer and Ocean County. Um, one of the things that I point out in safety education.
Lisa, I don't mean, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but do you, it's really, this is for questions for the architect. So if you have any questions for him, I, you'll have an opportunity, um, you know, to make comments, uh, on the issues that you're, you're making now at the end at the, at an appropriate time in the hearing, if you don't mind.
Certainly. So my next question is, as I understand it, there are forty affordable units.
Correct.
And that's three studios, four one bedrooms, two, sorry, twenty-five two bedrooms and eight three bedrooms. And as this whole plan is really driven off of the fair housing, fair share housing initiatives, um, I would imagine that those affordable units will fill up rather quickly. I would also like to make sure that you are aware that many people who are looking for affordable housing do not own a car. And many of them, their means of transport is either by bike or on foot or by mass transit.
Lisa, I, I, I'm sorry.
I'm leading to my question, sir. If you can let me finish, please. So if I take each of the numbers of bedrooms per unit that you have, um, stated in this plan, I calculate there are a total of one hundred and six bedrooms. That would say that if each affordable housing unit had one bike, the one hundred resident bike spaces would not be enough for the existing number of potential residents in affordable housing. What I'm trying to tell you is that I think you need more long-term residential bike parking. Or you'll have, um, bikes parked willy-nilly, chained outside. People talking about problems with the aesthetics.
Ms. Sarazol, not to cut off your commentary, but it's an issue that was raised by the professional staff um, as part of their review, and we will be supplementing for additional permanent bike spaces in the board.
Great. Um, my next point is that the number of crashes that it were recorded in the Princeton Shopping Center within the timeframe of two thousand and one to two thousand and fourteen, these are car crashes.
Is this architecture?
Yes, it's leading to architecture.
Car crashes?
If you, will you let me finish?
Let, let her finish, uh, her question, please.
Was four hundred and seventy-seven. If you are realizing that there is not only an addition of two hundred units into the, the shopping center, but you are not giving a multi-use path on the side. You are putting bicyclists and pedestrians at risk. Um, not only those who live here, but the many residents of the Witherspoon Jackson neighborhood who come to this shopping center to do their laundry. And it's the only laundromat in town. So I would stress that the multi-use path be the replacement for the sidewalk, the six-foot sidewalk that you're currently planning. Because it's just not wide enough for the residents and the the community at large that come to the, the shopping center.
Ms. Sarazol, that's not an issue that the architect, and I'm not meaning to, we, we'll invite you back. You can ask any and all questions of any other witnesses. We're just trying to limit this. And there are other people in the crowd that wanna ask questions specific to architecture.
Okay, well, I, that's why I was saying at the very beginning that I wasn't sure whether architecture in cur- in, in, included the exterior of the building as well as, as the building itself. But I can see that, that there have been changes to the, the bike paths that exist right now, and I wasn't sure whether that was part of your doing in, in, in the drawings, or whether that was something that is going to be dealt with at, at a later point. But if you can imagine that, that, that white line to the south is.
I, I just wanna say that.
Drawn by L R K, um.
I, I just wanna say that, see this like dashed property line here? That's the Avalon property and, and I can't really speak to anything outside of that.
Then, can I ask, why is the white line? Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Well, my, my question is gonna be for, for Mr. Hoff. Who, uh, is going to give testimony, uh, I assume at next week's, or sorry, the next meet, the, the meeting on the fourteenth. Um, that can address these many questions that relate to circulation and pet and bike safety, et cetera.
Mr. Cahill.
That, and I understand, I, I understand the, the envelope we're looking at here. Um, but who, who will do that? Mr. Cahill?
Mr. Cahill provided, um, detailed testimony about circulation tonight. The board offered questions and comments that he said we would, and I said we would take a look at. We'll be back on the fourteenth to talk about that. And we'll entertain more questions from the board, and the public gets another shot at Mr. Cahill. So I'm, I'm not looking to avoid any questions. I'm just trying to focus them to things that Mr. O'Brien testified on. Which he only dealt with, just think colors, just think pattern, materials. What does the building look like? That's, that's what Mr. O'Brien testified to.
Yeah, okay, thank you. And, and Ms. Seriosol, we, we have only twenty-five minutes before the, really the hard stop. So we do need to make sure that we hear e- every question that might be raised that's specific to architecture. Uh, I hope you could be back.
At the beginning that I wasn't sure where the line would, would end between the building and the, the perimeter roads that.
Understandable. We have two more people to speak. Do you have any questions for the architect?
Not any, none, anything further, thank you.
Thank you, Lisa.
Just a minute, Carrie, hang on, uh, Mr. Cohen?
I just wanna comment that I hope the traffic consultant will also have something to say about multimodal transportation safety and will not solely address automobile counts.
Uh, good point, and thank you. Okay, um, Carrie, are you bringing in Jessie?
Well, Jessie lowered their hand, so I'm a little confused. Um, Mark Liebman, who's being representative, is the next person to speak? Or should we put the attorney on? What would you like to do, Frank?
It's fine, you can have him.
Okay, oh, yes, he's being promoted, thank you.
Mr. Liebman, you're, uh, on mute. There you go.
Okay, um, good evening, uh, Madam Chairwoman, council members of the board. My name is Mark Liebman. I'm a partner with the firm of Kaufman, Somerero and Liebman. I represent Pam and Ives Kent at seventy-two T R Place. And I just wanted to put my appearance on the record. I just have a few questions for the architect. I have many questions for the engineer, and I'm sure I will have many questions for the traffic expert and landscape architect when their time comes. I will be as quick as I can. I presume you.
Thank you.
At eleven P M, at least I hope you do.
Yes, we definitely do.
Okay, so, Mr. O'Brien, can you tell me if the, um, garage to the residential building is controlled by a gate or some other mechanism?
Yeah, there's a overhead coiling door that provides, uh, secure entry to the parking garage.
Okay, and do you know if there, uh, is visitor parking inside the deck, or is the visitor parking all outside the deck?
Yes, there's, uh, visitors can use an entry system to call up to residents and get posted into the parking deck.
Okay, and is there a designated place for recycling and trash pickup for the residential building?
Yes, there is.
Can you show us where it is on the plan? I, I don't think I heard testimony about that, and I think the board may wanna know where that is before they get the testimony from the traffic engineer.
Sure, yeah, I thought I covered that, but here, uh,
You may have.
There's a, um, there's a, uh, a, um, compactor with a roll-off dumpster, um, it's a com- combination unit recycling trash. Um, when that thing gets full, it gets rolled off with a truck, taken, taken away by a truck and replaced.
Okay, thank you. You, while you have that exhibit up there, can you, uh, explain to me with the, the blue line that's shown on that plan? What does that denote? What does it separate, if you know?
The area of disturbance.
Thank you, Mr. Cohen.
I, I appreciate that, thank you. Um, do you have elevations of, uh, of the building from all sides in, in the plans? I didn't see that in the submission that was on the, the website.
Yes, and we, I presented each side of the building.
Okay.
Um, I can walk through those. If you'd like to, again, so left elevation.
Okay, so, all right, I just wanna make sure that that was.
And north elevation.
Okay. The, and that shows the recycling area there? That's the entrance to the garage?
Yeah, this is the garage entry. Yep.
Okay.
This is the trash recycling area.
Okay, um, do you know if all of the three-bedroom units of this building are gonna be part of the affordable housing obligation?
No, they are not.
Okay, and have you submitted a, a bedroom count under the uniform housing code to the board so they know exactly what the makeup of the bedroom counts are gonna be for the affordable housing units?
Yes, that's been submitted.
Okay, and I, I'm sorry I'm asking these questions. I just got into this matter very late this afternoon, and there's a huge amount of material to digest on the website. I didn't see a planner report, um, examining the bedroom counts for compliance with UHAC. Has that been done, as far as you know?
It, it complies with, I'll take that one, cause UHAC specifies the bedroom counts per unit, and it complies with the UHAC requirements.
All right, thank you, Mr. Hoff.
Sure.
That's all the questions I have for Mr. O'Brien. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, yep, thank you, um. Any other members of the public, uh, Carrie, have their hands raised?
Yes, a person in, uh, raised their hand at the very end. It says.
Okay.
Tino K. So I'm promoting them.
Okay.
Hi.
Raise your right hand. Do you swear that any testimony you might provide will be the truth?
I do.
And if you could just give us your name and address.
My name is Tino K, T O T H I O. My address is seventy-nine Dempsey Avenue. And I apologize for the kerfuffle. I was so busy thinking about my question.
And I apologize for the kerfuffle. I was so busy thinking about my question that I forgot to push the raise hand button. But can I ask? I'll try to be quick.
These are questions just for the architect, just so you know.
They are. Yes, they are.
Great. Thank you.
I'm actually really excited about this. I think it's cool. And I am asking these questions as someone who is imagining herself living in this building. And so I would like to know, I would like to thank Mr. Place and the municipal staff for catching that thing about the number of bicycle parking spaces. So I would like to know how they are secured. Because I think Mr. O'Brien mentioned a secure place, especially for the bicycle parking. And I would like to know how he plans to accommodate the extra racks that have become necessary. That's my first question.
Yes. So there's a room in the ground floor of the garage, which right now is currently holding 100, room for 100 bicycles, along with repair equipment, maintenance equipment, so forth for the residents. We have some space in there. It's under the slope of the ramp, so we can add some there. The rest of them will have to carve out in other places in the parking garage. They do have to be covered for the long-term parking. And so, so we'll be carving out racks in corners of parking garages to make sure we have enough to meet the ordinance.
Okay. And by secure, do I understand right that you mean that I will, that people, somebody will need a key to get into the garage and a second key to get into the bicycle storage space?
Yeah, it's, it's, I'm not sure exactly how they'll set up their security services for this, but there will, it will be some kind of fob or card that you'll use for access.
Okay, thank you. My second question has to do with energy efficiency and the use of natural gas. I am a climate freak. And I would so love to know that the building is, you know, LEED certified. I mean, you can say that you plan to build it to better than LEED standards, but there's nothing like a certification to prove that. And so a lot of the things that the members of this board have brought up, you have said they're expensive. And I'm wondering if it's possible to get an actual costing. The reason I ask is that a few years ago, my neighbor Heidi Fichtenbaum gave this talk. That was a real eye-opener to me. And with copious data, it was supported by copious data, but the conclusion was that you, yes, you can build a housing that is LEED certified, very tight, energy-wise and air-wise. And, and she was telling me the other day that you could also do this without using natural gas. And then the price was within error of build, doing a conventional building. That's why I would love to see a side-by-side comparison of the two.
Frankly, that's not something.
I'll take that one. We, we're not going to be providing our costs and doing a cost comparison for things that we're not going to be obligated to install. As we heard, the members of the board are very conscious to these issues. We recognize that, as Ken indicated and I indicated earlier, we look at these things, it's not solely driven by, you know, cost necessarily. There's maintenance, there's other issues that go into why we do the building the way we do. We're aware of these issues and we continue to look at them and incorporate different items as we see fit. But the key there is we have the liberty of making those decisions. We're not unconscious to these issues. We'll consider them, but we're not going to be agreeable to any specific measures within the building and providing any breakdown of our internal costs.
And have you considered the future? What, what am I trying to say? Attractiveness of your proposition to people who are really concerned? And I remind you that I am old, but this building is going to be there long after I am gone. And as you know, young people are much more concerned about climate than, than we are. And so that's your future clientele.
No doubt. And, and yes, and it goes into that. It goes into the marketing analysis and what features you need to have to attract different tenants. So it all goes into the mix. It's not something we're ignorant to. But it's different. It's different than being compelled to do it.
Thank you.
Thank you for the question, Ms. Tio. Are there other members of the public? Did you have any other questions? Tenaka?
I don't. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Carrie, is there anyone else waiting to speak?
No, Madam Chair.
In that case, I think we're pretty much done here, unless I'm missing something. I, I don't think that it makes sense to start with any other testimony at this point, since it's 12 minutes to 11. Mr. Hoff, do you want to?
Couple, just a couple of points, just to make clear that Mr. O'Brien's testimony is, is closed to the extent that there's, we, we've made him available for questioning so that the residential architecture from our perspective is finished. We'll hear comments on it potentially, but it wouldn't necessarily require a response through further testimony. And secondly, obviously, the applicant always wishes they had gotten further. We're prepared to move forward now with additional witnesses, architect, the landscape architect in particular. It's the board's call discretion. I can't make you stay here, but we do have a memorandum of understanding with respect to how this project will proceed, the timing for which it will proceed. And I appreciate the board has made it self-available for 1014 to hear this application. But we're up against an MLUL deadline at 1016 and we very much would like to keep that deadline. So we'd like to work with staff and the board to come up with a schedule. We're getting this done.
Yep.
So I, I just.
How many more? We, we are going, we're, we're not going to hear
with landscape architect.
Professional testimony tonight. But so who else do you have?
With the landscape architect, traffic consultant, and then the architect for the Walgreens and the retail end cap.
Right. Okay. On the 14th, you, you're the only thing on the agenda. So we will, we just, you know, encourage your you know, professionals to be concise. And, and we'll, would do our very best to get through it at that meeting. You know, obviously, we don't want people to, you know, go too fast or roll over things that need to be covered, but we can all be mindful of being as efficient as possible with the time on the 14th.
I have a quick question.
Yep.
So I, obviously, we, we want to make sure that this application goes through. But I mean, we could, we do have the right to deny the, the variances about signage. Right? It's within our right, but also approve the project.
Mr. Regan, do you want to?
They're, they're, you're, they're requesting variances. And if you feel they haven't met their burden, then you don't have to grant the variances.
Okay.
But there's still more testimony, you know, and, and opportunity for, for, for the applicant to, to address any issues and concerns that you may have. So.
And also there's an issue of the sign variance as it relates to the residential building that between now and the 14th, I want to review with Mr. Regan and Mr. Place, as I don't necessarily agree that there is a sign variance for the residential, given the way the redevelopment plan's worded. But I'll, I'll address that with staff first and we'll, they'll make a recommendation as to whether a variance is actually required on that building.
Okay. Any board members have any, any last thoughts before we adjourn? Any last questions or anything? Oh, I'm sorry.
I'll, I'll wait for Mr. Mr. Tex.
Go ahead, Zenon.
No, I just wanted to make a correction that natural gas makes up 38% of greenhouse gas emissions in Princeton.
And I just wanted to state, just to remind everyone that the planning board really is doing everything it can to accommodate everyone because from, from September to the end of the year, the board has, has decided to start their meetings an hour earlier. So that, I think that's quite a commitment on the part of the board.
Half hour, but it just seems like an hour.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. Well, I mean, you know, it's still something. I think we deserve a little credit for that, right?
Just before you adjourn, just if we can just again reiterate for the public that the, this hearing will continue on October 14th, 7:00 P M, virtually again. And as no further notice, you know, will be, is necessary or will be provided by the applicant.
One point to that, just so it's clear, Ms. Philip, the link that was in the notice and got members to the meeting or members of the public to the meeting tonight, is it the same? Or will it be posted as a different one on the thorough webs, on the Princeton website?
It will be a different Zoom link.
Okay. So members of the public should be made aware right now that if they want to access this meeting on 1014, they should go to the Princeton website to find that link and log on at that time?
Correct.
Thank you for that, Mr. Hoff. Okay. David?
Madam Chair, will you entertain a motion to adjourn?
I will. Thank you. Is there a second?
May I second the motion?
I will second that. Yes, I will third it.
The usual chorus of seconds. Thank you, everybody. All in favor, please say aye. Me opposed?
Thank you, everyone.
Thanks. Thanks very much. We'll see you next time.
Thanks. Have a good one.